Hello, good evening and welcome to the regular council meeting for the Pastorable City Council for Tuesday, February the 2nd. Before we open the meeting, I'll read the following. In compliance with the state and county shelter at home orders and is allowed by the Governor's Executive Order M-29-20, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, city council meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. Rather than attending in person, residents should call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via telephone. The phone line will be open just prior to the start of the closed session meeting and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: www.prcity.com/youtube. And with that, I will open our meeting, call it to order, and invite everyone to please mute your microphones so that we may join in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Hammond.
Join with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For invocation tonight, we have Reverend Barbara R. Miller. Reverend Miller, are you with us?
I am, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Loving, liberating, and life-giving God, so often these days, our prayer to you is for help. Especially in the past year, we have prayed for your help to overcome the coronavirus that moves throughout the world. Tonight, we give you thanks that you have been with us and are with us in everything we do during this time of pandemic and all ways. We give you thanks for the Pastorable City Council and the city staff for their diligent efforts in keeping our city functioning in the best possible ways to protect all who live and work here. We thank you for all the time and energy that they give our city. We thank you for their patience and perseverance in taking care of city problems as they provide for the health and mental well-being of the people of Pastorables. God, we pray for tonight's agenda and give thanks for your presence with the council as they review and consider each item. We offer these prayers in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much for that invocation. Now, if we might have a roll call, council members, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
And I'm here. And if we could please have staff introductions.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director. With me tonight is David Athie, the city engineer, Brian Cowan, the chief building official, Darren Nash, city planner.
Christopher Leckel, Public, Interim Public Works Director. And with me tonight is Matt Thompson, our wastewater manager.
Julie Dolan, Community Services Director, joined by Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent.
Ty Lewis, Police Chief.
Randy Harris, Battalion Chief Fire Marshal.
Ryan Cornell, Director of Administrative Services. With me tonight is Catherine Piatek, Finance Manager, and Chairman Faust, Human Resources Manager.
Sarah Johnson-Rios, Assistant City Manager, joined by Melissa Martin, City Clerk, Dave McHugh, IT Manager, Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator, and Paul Sloan, Economic Development Manager.
Kimberly Hood, Interim City Attorney.
Thomas Fruchy, City Manager.
Thank you, one and all. Prior to the open session, when I noticed closed session meeting of the Pastorable City Council, at this time, I'll ask the city attorney if there was any reportable action from that meeting.
The council convened in closed session on two items: public employment regarding a city manager position and conferences with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The one case identified on the agenda and provided direction to legal counsel, but there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. We move on now to our agenda this evening. First up, we have several presentations. Number one is our COVID-19 community update. Mr. Harris?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Martin and council members. I'm Battalion Chief Randy Harris, here tonight on behalf of Fire Chief Jonathan Stornetta to present this COVID-19 update. In total, the state has had over 3.3 million positive cases with 41,330 fatalities, which is an increase of 7,591 new fatalities since our last report to you on January 19th. The state regional stay-at-home order was lifted on January 25th after projected ICU availability over four weeks in all regions rose to over 15%. This allowed all counties to go back into the tiered system. Next slide, please. San Luis County is now in the purple tier, which allows for retail open indoors with modifications, restaurants outdoors only with modifications, wineries outdoor only with modifications, hair salons and barber shops open indoors also with modifications, hotels and lodging open with modifications, gyms, fitness centers outdoor only with modifications, and places of worship are outdoor only with modifications. Shopping centers are open indoors with modifications, and further guidance can be found at readyslow.org. In order to move into the red tier, daily new case counts need to be below 20 per day for 14 days. Next slide, please. As of this afternoon, the county has had 18,038 total cases, including 178 fatalities and 1,187 active cases. San Luis Obispo County has 48 COVID-19 patients currently in the hospital. 12 of those patients are in the intensive care unit. This represents a 20% decline in hospitalizations from our peak in early January. Over the past two weeks, the Pastorables region has averaged 95 cases per day, new cases per day. Additionally, San Luis Obispo County has a 61% ICU bed availability or 18 staffed ICU beds. Next slide, please. For vaccinations, San Luis Obispo County is still in Phase 1B, which allows vaccination appointments for medical personnel and those 75 and older. The county is still updating their website on Thursdays for the next week's available vaccine allocation. We encourage people to subscribe to the latest updates by going to emergencieslow.org or calling the appointment line at 805-543-2444. Next slide, please. We currently have three operating vaccination pods in San Luis County. The San Luis Obispo Pod transitioned to Questa College last week, which has allowed increased capacity. The Pastorables Pod has been distributing between 400 and 600 vaccines daily. The pod has eight stations and the capacity to distribute up to 1,000 vaccines per day. Still, our greatest challenge is the limited allocation of available vaccine doses. Pastorables Fire and Emergency Services personnel continue to support the Pastorables Pod and the incident management team daily. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Johnson-Rios for the balance of the update.
Thank you, Chief Harris. I have a few updates for you tonight focusing on the city's COVID-19 business assistance and communications efforts. And I see this slide here, I should mention as well, first, the state took action to extend eviction protection and debt relief through June 30th of 2021, and there's a lot more information available at covid19.ca.gov that previously had, was set to expire on January 31st. So again, that's an additional five months of eviction protection. Next slide, please. And one more. The city's economic recovery and small business relief efforts continue. We want to thank businesses with Parklets for their collaboration during last week's storm. Current Parklets remain funded through June, and council will be discussing next steps regarding Parklets on March 2nd. That discussion will be informed in part by a widely circulated survey regarding Parklets that the chamber is conducting, and I want to mention that survey tonight because it is open through February 9th, and I'm told it has already received almost 700 responses. So if anyone is still interested in responding, that's available until the 9th. Next slide, please. The propane support program is underway, and this is a program that the chamber is administering on behalf of the city, so qualifying businesses can contact the chamber to participate. The chamber is accepting reimbursement request forms now for January propane costs, and this program is available for winter heating costs from January through March. They've already got 10 businesses participating and additional interest, so you can contact the chamber at the number or website on the screen for enrollment information. Next slide, please. And hopefully folks have heard about the Keep It Local gift card promotion. As a reminder, it provides 20% off of gift card purchases at participating local businesses, allowing residents to save money while supporting local businesses. As of today, we have 75 local businesses participating, and there's a full list of participating businesses at prcity.com/keepitlocal. Next slide, please. And I wanted to note that the 75 businesses currently participating in the gift card program represent a broad range of sectors. This is similar to the city's small business grant program that was administered early this year, really trying to reach a number of different sectors. Next slide, please. And in addition, a number of different geographic areas around the city. So this is a map of the 75 businesses currently participating in the gift card program. You can see a cluster downtown, but really dispersed citywide, and businesses can still sign up at prcity.com/keepitlocal. Next slide, please. On the communications front, the city is continuing communication and outreach in English and Spanish and partners, and we are partnering with local organizations to share the messaging even in Mixteco whenever possible. The communications avenues highlighted in green on this slide are currently available in Spanish and in some cases, other languages as well. I'd like to take a brief moment to address any Spanish-speaking residents who may be interested in these resources. I know we're seeing increasing interest. So queremos informar a nuestros residentes que pueden llamar al 805-222-7276 para recibir asistencia en español. También pueden visitar prcity.com e inscribirse para recibir anuncios de prensa en español. O nos pueden seguir en Facebook, Twitter, o Instagram para recibir comunicaciones en español. So if you're listening and you know Spanish speakers who are interested in receiving communications from the city, we really encourage you to share these options with them. We do have expanded translation services on our phone lines and our website through Google Translate is translatable, but we're continuing to expand our efforts in these areas. Next slide, please. And actually, at the next council meeting on February 16th, we'll give you a little bit more detailed information about the COVID-19 multilingual outreach efforts because they've really been instrumental, the county believes, in helping slow the spread of COVID-19 in Slow County. So here's a sneak peek. The Farm Labor Outreach Task Force is a big part of these communications efforts, and this slide shows the partners in that task force. Next slide, please. And here's a reminder, as we come into Super Bowl Sunday, of the advice from Dr. Borstein, the county health officer, really asking community members to celebrate the Super Bowl safely this year to prevent another surge. This chart appears interesting. You can see the surges that happened after some of the recent holidays, and the county is asking folks to help us avoid another one. Those who choose to gather are urged to stay six feet apart, frequently wash hands, sanitize, avoid shared food and beverages, and wear a face covering. Next slide, please. Here's another reminder of the no-cost testing site and the public health guidance. That concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you for that. This is a presentation item, requires no action by the council. By being said, I'm going to go around and see if council members have any questions or comments about the presentation, starting with Councilman Hammond.
Yeah, question for Randy. Randy, when they do not, I've heard that the, some of the amount of allocated vaccinations aren't being used. Is that true, or is there a way that people can still line up or that don't have appointments to still acquire? What's the status of that?
So we have had some availability and appointments this week. However, just today, all the appointments did fill. All of the vaccines that we are receiving, the vaccines are initially received in either first or second dose allotments. So all of those are going out to the available people and appointments. It's really us trying to get vaccines that's currently the challenge.
Got it. So it's not really what I've heard in other cities around that they're having, I guess, vaccines that aren't being used. And I guess it's time-sensitive, obviously, because of the way they have to be kept and cooled. So we're not having that problem, though.
No, no, not at all. Matter of fact, the pharmacists only take out the vaccine doses as they have kind of people in line. So they're timing that very closely so nothing goes to waste.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, my only question is, they're reporting that they're not going to keep anything in reserve, and do we have any assurance that we're going to have enough vaccine for the second shots that are due within four weeks of the first?
You know, the county public health officer would be best to address that, sir. They're coordinating with those, but they are trying to get the initial first doses prioritized over the second doses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia.
No questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Yeah, another question for Battalion Chief Harris. Are they going to, if we start seeing lighting up, we'll go to the next phase on the vaccinations?
Absolutely. As soon as they start seeing openings on a regular basis in this tier, they'll start considering moving into the next year because the goal is to get the whole county vaccinated as soon as possible.
Okay. And then I had a question for Sarah on your presentation on the chamber. Who do people contact for the propane assistance?
They can contact, if you want to put that slide up, please, Warren, they can contact the chamber at 805-238-0506 or pastorableschamber.com.
Yeah, it's fun to share that with some of the businesses. Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to pass along a comment I received from a friend of the family who was 95 and just told me he got his first COVID shot and wanted to compliment everybody involved. He said it went very smoothly and was very appreciative of getting the shot and thought it was a good process, well-executed. So thank you for that. I see no one lined up in the public to comment on this report, so we're going to move ahead to item number two, another report, Caltrans Transportation Update. Gus Curry from Curry Consulting. Mr. Curry, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Gus Curry, President Curry Consulting. Pleasure to be with you this evening. Wish it was in person. I always look forward to coming down before the council. Lots going on in Sacramento. I just want to provide you this evening with a little bit of context as to what's happening and the impacts on our efforts to try to secure funding to improve the infrastructure and safety along the Highway 46 corridor. So substantial change in the state legislature. There was quite a bit of turnover. Democrats gained more seats in both houses during the November election. Both houses now have 75% representation by the Democratic Party. The reason why that's significant is for purposes of the state budget, given that we're in a COVID-induced recession. There could be a consideration to address the budget deficit by either any kind of fee or tax increase or putting something as a constitutional amendment on the state ballot. And so they have way over the requisite amount of members to be able to do that. There's 60 Democrats in the State Assembly. That's six over the two-thirds vote threshold there, and there's 31 Democrats in the State Senate, and that's well over the 24 that's needed there, sorry, 27 that's needed there. You may recall that last June, Governor Newsom had signed the fiscal year 2021 state budget, and they papered over a $54.3 billion deficit, general fund deficit. Much of that, again, just had to do with COVID. We were in line to have about a $7 billion surplus in January, and then it just all started crashing in March, as you know. The good news since then is that with some of the budget maneuvering that they've made, is that there was a business tax credit that was temporarily suspended for net operating losses. That created a windfall, as did a record amount of capital gains, which is about $17 billion. And so the budget deficit has been whittled down substantially. They're still banking on the come that we're going to get about $10 billion in federal assistance through a prospective federal stimulus package, and that remains to be seen. If we don't get that, that could result into additional cuts to education or deferrals to education and health and human services. So that's something to pay attention to. There is a structural deficit going out till next year of 7.5 billion, and then in fiscal year '24, '25, it jumps to $11 billion. The silver lining is for transportation. We're not funded through the state general fund anymore. We're predominantly reliant upon gas tax and the vehicle registration fee. And so, you know, my video's kind of choppy. I don't know if I should turn it off. Let's do that. Okay. So then, so as you would expect, gas tax consumption has been down, so there's going to be a shortfall for the next five years of about $1.5 billion. There should still be sufficient funding in order to fund, you know, local streets and roads, highway maintenance on the state highway system, and for and roads, highway maintenance on the state highway system, and for SlowCOG receiving its share of state grant funding also, which, you know, they also can pass on to PASO for projects through the State Transportation Improvement Program. We are working very closely with our legislative delegation, the city staff and I, and I know Mayor Martin, that you've had, been in some discussions also with Senator Laird, who succeeded Senator Munning. And Senator Laird was unequivocal about his commitment to make sure that we're not the tail on the dog of his district, as he put it, that he referenced having come down to the district about 25 times as he was running, and he wants to make sure that he collaborates with the council and that we utilize him as a resource. And so we've been working with him because the city put in a grant application for the Active Transportation Program through the California Transportation Commission, a $6 million grant in order to fund Creston Road. And so we're waiting for next Monday to come here where the staff recommendations come out on that program. So he's already had conversations, as have I, with key decision makers. Things have gotten, they're a little bit different this cycle because previously there was not involvement by the Air Resources Board, by the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and by the Housing and Community Development Agency. And given Governor Newsom's executive orders, his successive orders, one that was released in September of 2019, which we previously talked about, about wanting to utilize existing state resources to eliminate or drive down vehicle miles traveled, eliminate greenhouse gas emissions, and try to motivate the public to ditch their vehicles and entertain multimodal options such as bus, train, bike, or walking. And so city staff has been working feverishly, along with Caltrans District 5, in a very collaborative and collective fashion in order to update our environmental documents to try to make us more competitive. We're having to reinvent, you know, the different types of projects that we're doing. Currently, we did get some additional good news back in December. The California Transportation Commission authorized $7.5 million. That's going towards the completion of the Y project. The reason why that's substantial, outside of the obvious safety enhancements there, is it's going to shift our focus westward and, you know, to help make improvements through the city. And we fought pretty hard because under the new administration, there was, at one point, a desire to remove Highway 46 as one of the priority corridors that was on the freight mobility plan. And through regional advocacy and in working with various stakeholders, including the Central Coast Coalition, SlowCOG, among others, we were successful in retaining 46 as one of those priority corridors, given its significance as an east-west connector. So we're optimistic going forward. We have a commitment from the California Transportation Commission to work more collaboratively with us on the administration, or, sorry, in putting together the applications. And then we're looking more closely, too, as far as being able to get additional state resources. One item that came up recently was to make sure that if our local sales tax measure would qualify to receive state funding. We do have a portion that's dedicated towards local streets and roads, and city staff and I are working together with the Transportation Commission. We're going to see if we can get an item before the commission in March, and if all goes well, because our measure generates up to $5 million, we could see up to that amount come from the state, you know, in the next, in the next cycle of funding. But you would have the money by July. So we are working closely also with Assemblymember Cunningham. We have an upcoming meeting with him. He's also been incredibly active in talking to CTC commissioners and the Department of Transportation on our behalf. He's also working on trying to establish more as the state looks to convert over to electric vehicles and zero-emission infrastructure. He has had legislation last year, which he may entertain this year, to try to make that available. And so that could be something that we could work with District 5 on, too, you know, as people traverse 46 and the 101. So we definitely have a lot going on. I think most of it is positive. We've made great strides in our relationship with Caltrans, and we want to build upon the work and pursue some of these upcoming grants. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Thank you very much for that report. Once again, this is an information item and requires no action, but let's go to the council for comments. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gus, you were mentioning the grant for Creston Road. I'm actually going to have John Laird speaking at Rotary in about three weeks, and I'd like to ask the senator, impress him a little bit about that grant. You call it the active grant for $6 million is what we're trying to go for on the Creston Road area?
Yes, yes, council member. It's the Active Transportation Program Grant, and the staff recommendations come out next Monday. And so he's called the commission, the Transportation Commission. He's spoken to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and he was also going to reach out to the Air Resources Board, I believe, being a former Natural Resources Secretary for the state, to try to pitch for our project.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Gus. Nice to hear from you. I know you primarily work for us at the state level, but we're facing a threat from the federal level, from the Office of Management and Budget, too, on changing the population requirements to be a metropolitan statistical area. I'm wondering if you are going to have any influence or input into that process to try to protect us as they try to raise that population level?
Yeah, good evening, Councilmember Strong. So this is something that SlowCOG Executive Director Rogers had brought to my attention as well. And what I had offered is, I mean, I have a really good relationship with newly-minted U.S. Senator Alex Padilla, and I'm happy to try to coordinate a conversation there. I know that you're personally active on many levels on the, you know, with respect to federal issues, and so I'm happy to compliment anything that you're doing to try to get some reconciliation on the issue.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Hey, Gus, I just want to say thank you for being so steady and tenacious on getting us help. Thanks.
My pleasure, sir.
Very good, and thank you once again for that report. I don't see anyone lined up in the public to make a comment, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Item number three is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, a proclamation. We have Janay Sargent of RISE online to be accepting that. Janay, are you with us?
Hi.
Hi. We're going to read this proclamation, then I'm going to turn it over to you to make a few comments if you would like.
Great, thank you so much.
So this is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that dating violence is widespread and impacts every young person in Passerobles. Whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, one in 11 female teens and one in 15 male teens reported experiencing physical violence in the last year. Whereas according to the CDC, one in three adolescents report verbal, emotional, physical, or sexual dating abuse each year. Whereas rates of dating violence affect LGBTQ youth at rates higher than their cisgender and heterosexual peers. Whereas teen dating violence has been linked to other forms of violence and aggression, and survivors are more likely to suffer from eating disorders, drug and alcohol use, dropout, teen pregnancy, future abusive relationships, and suicide. Whereas nearly half of students who experience dating violence have reported that some of the abuse took place on school grounds. Whereas RISE and STAND STRONG continue to provide a safe environment for young people affected by teen dating violence with crisis intervention, counseling, legal services, safe emergency housing, and local community prevention programs such as Close to Home, coaching boys into men, and athletes as leaders. Whereas the establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit schools, communities, families, and all youth. And whereas the City of Passerobles joins RISE and Close to Home and other advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent dating violence and acknowledges that each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Janay, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and council members. As you said, my name is Janay Sargent. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Prevention Education Manager at RISE, which is the county's Sexual and Intimate Partner Violence Resource Center. As 2020 and COVID-19 have swept the nation and the world, they have left long-lasting impacts on our communities. While we have all experienced immeasurable hurt, there are few who have felt this past year more than young people. It's difficult to express the prevalence of teen dating violence without first acknowledging that our youth today face more risks of violence than they have in the majority of our lifetime. Whether they are sheltering at home with abusive families, battling mental health crises, or seeking community in online spaces, now than ever that we listen to the teens in our lives to prevent violence that many of them could and do face, whether we know it or not. According to the National Sexual Violence Resource Center, one in three teens will experience some form of dating violence before they turn 18. Of them, only one-third talk to an adult about what they went through. RISE offers free and confidential services for youth 12 and older who have experienced any form of intimate violence with a 24-hour hotline, crisis support, free counseling, and prevention education. Like is the case for many other organizations in Slow County, COVID-19 has made it harder than ever for RISE to connect young people to life-changing services. In 2019, RISE served 184 youth clients and offered healthy relationship workshops to more than 900 students in our county. In 2020, youth clients fell to 139, and preventionists were only able to deliver four healthy relationship workshops before the pandemic hit. While the education system was flipped on its head, RISE preventionists have worked with volunteers to create safe, supportive virtual spaces, offering youth a way to connect while sheltering at home. These creative virtual spaces have been powerful for many of the youth that we work with, but they don't do enough to close the gap our community is experiencing right now. With millions of young people feeling disconnected from their communities, it's on the adults around them to reach out and create pathways for communication. It's more important now than ever to reach out to the teens in our lives, be a pillar of support for them, come to them, ask them what they need, and provide a judgment-free listening space. It means more than many of us realize. You can help raise awareness about teen dating violence by wearing orange on February 9th, posting a photo on social media, and tagging @closetohome_slow and RISE. But at the end of the day, teen dating violence won't be prevented or ended by just posting a photo or talking about it for one month out of the year. You can find out how you can make a lasting change to support youth in San Luis Obispo County by connecting with a RISE educator and asking how you can show up for the young people in your life. If you're interested, you can email education@rise-slow.org for more information. Again, I thank you and the City of Passerobles for your commitment to serving young people and survivors in your community. It shows, and it means a lot to all of us.
Thank you, and thank RISE and all the people in the partner organizations for the work you're doing, both in our community and beyond. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have general public comments. This is the time the public may address the council on items within the council's purview but not scheduled on the agenda. Please begin by stating your name and address. Each person is limited to three minutes. Any person or subject requiring more than three minutes may be scheduled for a future council meeting or referred to committee or staff. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered. At this time, I see no one in queue for general public comments. Do we have anyone from your end staff?
No, sir.
We'll close general public comments and bring it back to the council. Ask the city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred this evening?
No, sir.
Very good. We push on then with our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is pulled for separate consideration. Items pulled from consent will be heard at the end of the meeting. That being said, I'm going to go around to the council. If there are any questions on any of these items or any items to be pulled, if you'd let us know. Mr. Hammond?
I have none, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
No, sir.
And Mr. Gregory?
No, sir. Thank you.
I have no questions, and I have no one in queue from the public with questions for the consent calendar, so I'll open and close that portion and bring it back to the council and entertain, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Was there a question?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
I move the consent calendars, item number 4 through 10.
Strong seconds.
I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Before we go on, if I could ask the city manager, please, to give us a short report on the consent calendar items so people listening in know what actions have been taken this evening?
Happy to, Your Honor. Thank you. Tonight, on its consent calendar, the council approved the city council minutes from January 19th. Also received the warrant register, and the warrant register is the listing of checks the city writes to pay for the goods and services it purchases. And during this period, the warrant registered totaled $1.5 million. Dry Creek Road was 422,000 of that total. The water fund was 238,000 of that total, and the wastewater fund was 65,000 of that total. The council received advisory body minutes from the library board and from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The council also approved an annual report on the city's development impact fees, and this is a state-required report that identifies the fund balance at the beginning of the fiscal year, the revenues received by each fund, the projects for which revenues were expended, and the ending balance of each of the development impact fee funds. Next, the council approved two contracts for the landscaping and lighting district maintenance of areas 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7. One contract was with Martinelli Landscape Construction. The second contract was with KD Johnny Landscaping. And in both cases, these are two-year contracts, beginning on February 15th, with the option to extend by mutual consent in two-year increments for a total of 10 years. The council also received and filed the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And along with the budget document, this is the other major financial document that's so important for the city and for our community. And what the annual financial report does, it's an attestation by outside auditors that the documents that Mr. Cornell and his staff produce every year fairly represent the city's financial position, and that's the accountant's way of saying that the reports are accurate and are designed to transmit and be transparent and transmit information to the public about the city's financial condition. And in addition, the cafer notes no deficiencies in our financial controls. That means, to the extent possible, we are doing everything that we can to assure the community that we are good stewards of their monies and are worthy of their trust. And I might note, this is the 21st year in succession that the city has received such a clean audit. So really, kudos to the administrative services, the So really, kudos to the Administrative Services Department, in fact, all departments that do such a great job of managing the city's money. And then finally, on consent tonight, the council approved a renewal of the contract with Corey Consulting to, as you heard previously this evening during your presentation, to assist city staff by working with us to network with the funding agencies and the legislators to ensure that in this era in California finance where the state controls more and more of the funding, that we receive funds as best we can on a fair share basis. And some grants are competitive, some grants are based on formulas. Those two types of grants frequently seem to, especially in the transportation area, favor the big cities and the congested cities. And Gus and our staff, including Deidre, and Warren, and David, work really hard to ensure that we get our fair share of the money because it's our residents and visitors who are paying those funds into the state. And that is the consent calendar from this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you for that report. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we move on now to discussion items. Agenda item number 11 is Supplemental Sales Tax Oversight Committee Bylaws Update and Revision, Proposed Revisions to Code of Ethics. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, this item came to you in December and was referred to tonight because of the press of other business. Next slide, please. So just as background, in 2012, the voters approved Measure N12, which was a half-cent sales tax, meaning one-half cent on every dollar of expenses for taxable items within the city. And that measure was designed to devote its revenues to road repair and maintenance within the city. And in fact, since 2012, so for nine years now, the city has spent more money on road repair and maintenance than has been generated by that measure. So the city council, as advised by the existing Supplemental Sales Tax Oversight Committee, has met that commitment and more to the community. It's a 12-year measure. It will sunset on March 31, 2025. And then just this past November, the voters approved Measure J20, for which we are very thankful, and it's a one-cent measure, and it's designed to fund high-priority public safety services, primarily emergency response, disaster preparedness, police, fire, and also some road maintenance and repair as well to ensure that the public is safe while they drive those roads, that we minimize traffic accidents, and our first responders can navigate the city quickly. Each of those two measures called for an independent oversight and advisory committee. Next slide, please. So the current committee for Measure N12 and the committee we're talking about tonight have these primary features. So first and most importantly, it's an independent committee. It reports back to the city council and to the community directly on its findings. And the overall intent of the committee is to provide oversight to ensure that the funds are spent as the community would wish, based on its priorities as identified through surveys, polling, direct testimony, direct input from residents, and other means, with a secondary function of providing advice. But that is by no means as important as the primary role, which is to provide that independent oversight. There are at-large and affiliate members, so not only individuals, but organizations within our community have representation. But all members of the committee, regardless of how they are selected, are required to represent the community as a whole and do what's right for the community as a whole over the long term. We are recommending tonight that there be just one committee for both ballot measures, and that is because the... for two reasons, two primary reasons. First, both N12 and J20 will be spending some funds on road maintenance, for example. And it's important that the expenditure of those funds is viewed overall so that we are assured that all projects and all efforts being undertaken match the community's priorities. And then, secondly, the N12 committee had found from time to time that it was difficult to get a quorum and difficult to maintain interest because after a while it got boring because the city was quarter after quarter, six months after six months, year after year, spending even more money that was being generated. So we want to ensure that the members of our community who volunteer for the committee really have some meat to dig their teeth into and look at the revenues and expenditures for both revenue measures. Next slide, please. So tonight, we are proposing to you a committee that will oversee both revenue measures. That will be composed of 11 members. Six would be appointed by the council at large, based on applications and interviews. Five would also be appointed by the council but would be members affiliated with organizations throughout the community. And those organizations would recommend someone to the council for appointment. In addition, there would be four liaisons, the typical council liaison, but also the police chief, the fire chief, the public works director, or their designees, in any case. But what that would mean is there would be 15 reasonably active members at each committee meeting, and we felt going any larger than that would negatively impact the effective functioning of the committee. The overall membership of the committee would include, to the extent possible, that we would have at least six residents, or in other words, a majority of the total members being residents of the city. Clearly, some business people may be on the committee, wouldn't necessarily have to be residents, but clearly they have an interest as well in ensuring the funds are spent appropriately. And that, to the extent possible, there'd be at least one member from each council district. Next slide, please. So the five affiliated members, we are suggesting they be distributed in the following way, that three represent general business interests of the community. So it could be the Chamber, Hispanic Business Alliance, One Country Alliance, Travel paso. Any of the general business groups within the city would be eligible to recommend someone. There would be one member representing our significant education community, whether that's private or public at all levels, from preschool up through college, up through Questa College. And finally, there'd be one service provider representing the not-for-profits in our community, the healthcare industry, and others in our community that aren't necessarily affiliated in always with the general business community. Current members of the N12 Oversight Committee can apply. We have some really good members of that committee, and they would apply if they choose to continue serving and be considered by the council, recognizing their service already. There would be, among the 11 members, staggered terms, three-year terms, but starting with the first appointments and starting on April 1st, which would be the first day of the new committee, there'd be some who would be serving a one-year term, some serving a two-year term, and the rest serving a three-year term. And all members would be able to serve two complete terms. Next slide, please. In addition, we're proposing that, as is true of all council committees, the Oversight Committee have the... in support and adhere to the ethics code. But we're also taking this opportunity to give the council an option. You could choose to continue the current ethics code, but it's also an opportunity before you enter into the creation of this very important committee, as well as we are soon entering the new appointment cycles of the Planning Commission, the Housing Authority, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Library Board. We are proposing a second ethics code, which has been updated and includes some additional sections on the Brown Act and on relations of committee members and the committees as a whole with staff, with the media, and with the public. So the council has the choice of which it chooses to do, but in the long run, we definitely recommend that the council seriously consider the updated Enhanced Ethics Code. Next slide, please. And with that, Your Honor, any questions the council may have?
Thank you for the presentation. We will start with council questions before we go to public comments, starting once again with Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, the current committee, how many are actually serving, or how many do we have? Are there seven, I believe?
That is my belief, yes, sir.
Yeah. And we haven't adjusted that committee in quite some time, so I would think most of them have been on for quite a while. I don't recall their terms, is what my point is. But we are offering it for them to continue. And your thought was, again, to combine the new and the old oversight together into one, to make one meeting? And do you think they would have enough time? In other words, instead of meeting quarterly, would we be doing it more often than quarterly?
That's certainly up to the council's direction, but my belief is, and Ryan Cornell and his Administrative Services staff will be the primary staff support for the committee, so they will be preparing the financial tables to identify for each of the measures the revenues that have been received, up-to-date as well as in the most recent quarter, as well as the expenditures. I really don't believe that that'll take a lot... I mean, it's not going to take twice as much time as it took for the current committee because of the way Mr. Cornell can do the reports and make it very clear to the committee members exactly what has transpired. So I do believe that quarterly or every six months are the appropriate periods of meeting. At the minimum, we would give the reports quarterly, but the committee can meet every six months or have special meetings if there's something they're concerned about.
Well, yeah. I would suggest, again, a minimum on a quarterly basis. And again, the commission or committee can essentially call a meeting in between if they had to. And what I'm also trying to figure out in the bylaws is that I would like to see them be able to make recommendations. In other words, this is a vast wealth of knowledge of the city that I would respect their opinion on, and I would think, again, that they should have input on ways to propose, you know, funds being spent. So as before, though, with... I was kind of disappointed originally when I proposed this, you know, originally on the streets, was that they didn't really have much input. They... all they did basically is report out, which is important, but on the other hand, we put people on there that were very knowledgeable with regard to street maintenance, and basically they're muzzled, didn't really have a whole lot of input. Toward the end, though, they were more engaged. So that's what I'm hoping we can do here. The people we put on this panel would be very, very important for me to have recommendations on things. So that's my...
Thank you.
Mr. Strong, questions?
Yes, and I'm going to stick to questions. I'm not going to comment like John did yet. I'll do that later. My question, however, is, don't we get our reports on our income from those sources quarterly? So wouldn't it be appropriate to have meetings after we know how much came in and Ryan can figure out how much we've also spent and give that information to the committee?
Councilmember Strong, through the mayor, we do some... get some reports on a monthly basis, but sales tax, for instance, gets reconciled with the state on a quarterly basis. So that's why, as I indicated, we would be giving reports at a minimum to the committee members on a quarterly basis. Whether there is anything to meet about is another story. Certainly, at the beginning, quarterly meetings, or even more frequently, make sense. But once the plans have been adopted, and as Councilmember Hammond referred to, over the last few years, the five-year streets plan was taken to the committee for review and advice to the council. And so, once the plans have been developed and are underway, there may not necessarily be many significant issues on a quarterly basis, and so the committee could choose to meet every six months. But certainly initially, both the revenue side and in terms of the programs being developed, it would make sense to have at least quarterly meetings.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm questioning why we would do it more often than quarterly since this is all tied to sales tax, and that information only does come to us quarterly.
I certainly agree with you on a revenue basis. It just may be that the committee wants to meet more frequently than based on some programmatic issues. That's going to be totally up to the committee after it's formed. As you see in the draft bylaws, we're recommending quarterly reports and regular meetings every six months, but the committee can certainly have special meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Yes, sir. On the bylaws, I just had a couple of questions. Go back to that, I'm sorry. Oh, the grandfathered membership? I know you just talked about it a little bit, Tom, that we're going to allow them, the ones that are on it now for the N12, to reapply. But it says here, it says, "N12 who are members and good standing." So what would that... Could you define what the "good standing"?
Good standing just means that they have not missed a number of meetings that would disqualify them from continuing, or any other reason that they would not be able to continue. It's just a standard phrase to... So if we were in the middle of a review process based on missing meetings, then that member would not necessarily be in good standing. But there's no one that I know of at this point who is not in good standing.
Could we probably add that to the... Just make it more... put more of a definition in that?
Certainly.
Okay. And then also in the... I think it was the termination of membership. I know how important this is to our community, and it talks about... I think them being there is going to be the most important thing, and like John is saying, Mr. Hammond is saying, being more verbal. But I think we should put something here about their attendance. Maybe if... I mean, I know life happens and you can't make every meeting, but this is a commitment that they're making to be on the committee. So I was wondering if we could add some kind of wording to the termination of membership as far as attendance?
We certainly can. As it currently reads under Article 1, Section 5, Paragraph D...
Right.
If the member has incurred an excessive number of excused or unexcused absences, as outlined below, they would be terminated from membership. So if you would like to change that, we certainly can, but it does address attendance already.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for now, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strong? I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah. So, Tom, I just have a couple of quick questions. So my first question is that the existing members of the N12 committee will be permitted to apply to be on the J20 larger group, correct?
Yes. In fact, we would encourage at least some of them to do that because that's continuity of knowledge that we'd like to continue. It'd be very helpful to have that knowledge and experience to help guide the new committee as it forms.
So if I read this correctly, though, there's only two at-large positions that those committee members could fit in. Change that so that... And this is my question, is that if some of those members are in one of the districts, they could actually fill one of those seats?
So the current committee members could apply either as for one of the six at-large seats, or they could apply to be affiliated with an organization. Let's say, for example, that one of the current committee members is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce. They could certainly go to the chamber and say, "I'd like to be your recommended appointee to the committee." If the chamber agrees, the chamber would write a letter to the council saying, "We hereby request the appointment of Joe Smith to the new committee." And then the council would interview Mr. Smith, along with the other people it's interviewing, and make a decision whether to appoint that person to the committee or not. So actually, the current committee members have 11 seats they could apply for.
And then my last question is that the at-large positions actually decrease... And then my last question is that the at-large positions actually decrease in the new format. Is there a reason why we're decreasing the number of at-large people?
It's just, there is no conceptual reason. It's just a matter of the numbers. We're trying to keep the size of the committee manageable. And what the council members clearly indicated in prior discussions was they wanted to ensure that major organizations in the city represented. But for instance, if you did not want to have a seat for the education establishment, that would be seven at-large members. Or when you see the applications, if you think the, and I'm just going extreme here, if you think 11 best applicants are all at-large members, the bylaws give you the ability to appoint 11 at-large members. It's at your discretion to try to get the best committee.
Yeah, that was my question. And then one final question. So there's 11 committee members and four liaisons people, correct?
Correct. And the liaisons obviously do not vote and don't participate in the discussion on an ongoing basis, as do the members. But we think with this type of committee, given the complexity of the potential funding opportunities, there'll be plenty of questions and opportunities for the expertise of the four liaisons to come into play.
No, several other comments, but I'll wait till after the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, a couple of questions. What kind of coordination will we have between this advisory committee or this oversight committee and our budget process? Because obviously, we're dealing with funds in, funds out, budget time. They're reviewing funds in, funds out. Are there going to be any ties scheduling-wise between that committee and our budget discussions?
There certainly can be. It's a little bit trickier this year because the committee's just starting up. But on the other hand, on April 1st, when the committee holds its first meeting, or actually, the committee goes into effect, we will not have received any revenues yet. So let's say the committee meets April 1st, does the typical organizational things necessary to get the committee up and underway. The council will be starting its budget deliberations process. The council could certainly, as, since this is in part a council advisory committee, the council could certainly say, "We'd like to ask the committee to have a special meeting and consider X, Y, and Z." So I think the first year, there are plenty of opportunities. And then in subsequent years, I thought the chamber made a good suggestion. We may want to amend the schedule of meetings in subsequent years to align with the budget process that the council and new city manager designed for subsequent years.
Okay. On the ethics code, I'm just wondering if, is there a time sensitivity to updating the code right now? Or is this something that might be a good idea to go through discussions with on the bodies that it will affect before we adopt it?
There is no urgency. No, sir.
Okay, very good. And then I know back in the beginning, when we first put the N-12 committee together, one of my questions of all the applicants was, you know, are you ready and able to represent to the public your findings? Because that was a very important thing to me, that reporting out would get to the public. And I still have people that don't seem to hear from this. Have we ever charged that committee with, you know, part of your annual work plan is putting together a community communication strategy?
I don't think we have. I haven't attended all its meetings, but I don't think we have. But in the past, we haven't had someone, as we now have with Shawna Hohenstein, who is so good and devoted to ensuring that two-way communication between the city and its constituents. So we certainly could ask Shawna to work with the new committee to develop that kind of a communications program.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, looking for things for people to sink their teeth into, that would be a project, so. Okay, those are all my questions. Let's go around them quickly one more time before we go to the public. Mr. Hammond, any further questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strong?
No, sir.
Ms. Garcia?
No, sir.
Mr. Gregory?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open to public comment. I'm looking at my document here. It seems that we had one caller who was now hung up, and I see no one else in the queue. So I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion, starting off with Mr. Hammond.
Well, again, I, I'm okay with having one commission as opposed to, originally, you were talking maybe two. And just as long as the scope of what they have to cover can be broad enough to be able to do recommendations, I'm good with moving forward as we have it proposed.
Very good. Mr. Strong?
I think allowing them to make recommendations is fine. I would not like to see it be a requirement because that's why we have staff and we have experts.
Okay. And Ms. Garcia?
Yes, sir. I really do feel that it's very important that, like you said, we get some kind of report out to the community. So I don't know if we currently do that on the website. I know that when I look for special agendas, do they also put the minutes of these committees on the website?
Yes, ma'am.
How are these things reported out to the public?
So we do the agendas. They're posted for all committees prior to the meeting, both hard copy as well as on the website. And we do the minutes once approved. We don't always do the draft minutes because we like to get those to the council first, since it's the council that provides oversight of all of our committees. But the adopted minutes, yes, are put in the official legal records as well as put on our website.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I've got several comments. So just, just for a heads up on everybody, I've been liaison for four years now with the N-12 group. And I'd like to continue on. But on the first meeting in April, there is business to be discussed, and that is the spending for the roads and road improvements from N-12. So that'll be a place to start. One of the, one of the things that I think is really important on this committee, and I need to say this, is that this is an advisory committee to the council. And one of the things that makes people attend is to be able to have them feel like they're actually advising the city council, not just being held in check or commenting on do this or do that. And so, in the, in the roads for the last six years, DEDIS has presented all of the information. And in the last couple of years, we were able to maneuver some of those items around to make things work better on scheduling and from input from the public. One of the things I'd really like to see us change in this next round on this committee is to set it up more like, not as formal as a planning commission setup, but a more formal, a more formal agenda set up so that Police Chief Lewis or Fire Chief Sterneta can make presentations in the format of the projects they're talking about so people could fully understand it and the committee can understand and make choices or recommendations for the council. I think that's something that was missing before, that I think would really be good. Another item that is very critical to this, to me, in my opinion, and I think we, I don't know, we need to change the way this is written, is DEDIS did a great job on presenting all the time for everything that's going on with the roads. But we do need somebody to report back to the public. And Shawna Hohenstein is a perfect result for that. So I highly recommend that she's at the meetings, helping that information go to and fro, especially coming in for all the members and then back out to the public, and then, of course, to the council. So, and then finally, I'd like to comment. I would like to see a little more public numbers in this, like seven members at large rather than six. I don't want to take anything from the other organizations. But it's really important to have the public involved. They're the people that voted for this, and they need to be fully supported in their process of representing what they believe is right in our city and on an advisory capacity for this tax. So my only recommendation of changes, I really think that we should get up to at least seven at-large members. And that's all I have to say. I think that's one change I'd like to see.
Very good. So I've been keeping notes here, as I'm wont to do. The points that we seem to have consensus on are formation of one commission rather than two commissions. I and Mr. Gregory, and unless there's a discussion on this, would like to see the first, would like to see a special meeting in April to get in sync with the budget process. Some of the things that we, that will probably fill the bill or fill the agenda for this oversight committee will include the oversight functions that have been undertaken so far as far as making sure that the city is spending the money the way it's supposed to be spending it. But we would also accept, but not require, input and advice from this committee. We would like to have the committee form in conjunction with city staff, an ongoing community relations report that gets information about the committee, about the city finances being affected out to the public. And then Mr. Gregory's comments about public involvement and looking for seven public members. So that seems to be where we are position-wise. Does anybody want to add something to that or take something away, Mr. Hammond?
The only thing I want to mention is that, do we have public comment on their input yet?
We had, we had public comment open and closed because there was nobody to speak.
Ah, okay. I missed that, I'm sorry. So, no, I'm good at this point. Again, I kind of agree with Councilman Gregory about the seven at-large would be, I think, more impactful. Because again, as he said, they're the folks that actually voted this in. Their voices need to be heard. They, of course, can come to the meetings as we all do. But I think seven at that point on the at-large level would be what I prefer to.
Very good. Mr. Strong?
Yes, and I think you, Mr. Mayor, and the Councilman Gregory have thought this through very well. And I like your combined suggestions, and I'm certainly in favor of them.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Yes, sir. I just want to make more people aware of this committee. We know that it's happening, and I know that a lot of people voted for this. But I just, I know that Shawna would do a great job to get it out there. But you know how we always present? We always talk about planning commission and city council meetings. But I think we should add this when we report at the end of our meetings, when these specific meetings are held. Because I think they're of great importance for our community to stay involved.
Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Gregory, any, any bows on the, on the package here?
Yes, I want to continue to add a couple of bows, if I may. And I don't know how, I need to get feedback from our city manager and staff. It'd be really nice to have Shawna Hohenstein take the presentation to the council after each meeting. So that, there's twofold reasons. And Tom is very sensitive to this, and so is Steve. That is, we need to get the information out about where the money's going, what's happened with it. And one of the things that we learned is, our general public doesn't get enough information about all the things we're doing with these taxes. So I think we need to turn every stone, do everything we can, very publicly, and explain what we're doing with funding and what's happening and all the improvements we're making. And I think Shawna Hohenstein would be the ideal person for that. And have that report come back to us every quarter. And otherwise, with the seven at-large members, I think that this committee should be considered to be an advisory committee. I don't know if we need to change any of the language, but I think that needs to be stated.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I believe our city manager wanted to comment. His hand is raised. Thanks. Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman Strong. So based on everything you stated, Mr. Mayor, and that I've heard, I would recommend the following changes to the proposed bylaws. Page 176 of your pack, at the first page of the bylaws, does have a paragraph in the middle of the page that talks about its advisory role. So I don't believe that needs to be changed. I think that certainly provides the flexibility for the committee to do exactly as some council members are recommending. On page, the second page of the bylaws, page 177, I would recommend two changes that, based on what I've heard, that there'd be seven at-large appointees. And the way to do that, subject to council approval, would be either to combine the educational and not-for-profit sectors. So there'd be three members representing general business interests and one member representing the other organizations. Or just have four affiliate members representing all of those groups and give the council ultimate flexibility in how you do that. Next on that page, I would suggest we just delete the words "in good standing" because as the city attorney notes, all current members are in good standing. So that clause is not needed. I'm sorry, I don't know where that noise is coming from. I just thought I'd wait till it was over. On the page 182 of the agenda pack, at page seven of the bylaws, under Section 12, we changed the wording there to make it very explicit that there will be a report to the council after every regular meeting of the committee. Certainly, there could be a report after a special meeting. But let's make sure that there is a regular report to the council after every meeting. And that would be done by Mr. Cornell as the lead staff to the committee. But of course, Shawna would be engaged and involved in that as well as in the parallel report that would go to the community as a whole. But, so Ryan, in essence, would be in charge of the content, and Shawna would assist with ensuring that the presentation is such that it's most effective in reaching people through social media, through the website, and other means. And with those changes, Mr. Mayor, I think that reflects the input and direction I heard from the council.
So I do have one more, Steve. And Tom, you could confirm this. So in the bylaws, under Article Two, Section Four, under Secretary, so it talks about the Administrative Services Director, or does it need to be the secretary? Is that strong enough language to allow Shawna to be that person?
Actually, I think the, I think Mr. Cornell or Ms. Piatti, whoever, should be the lead staff because the most important part is that we have numbers on revenues and expenditures that, just as our audit has proven for 21 years, demonstrate that we are spending the money appropriately. And that when committee members have questions, they've got someone standing there who can answer those questions. That's asking too much of Shawna. That's not her area of expertise. But certainly, in terms of packaging the reports for the community, Shawna would be a priceless addition.
Yeah, well, the backside of Section Five, Secretary should be responsible for noticing meetings, helping create agenda, keeping minutes, and other things. I don't know. So I just want to make sure that we have her in there somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Tom, would it be appropriate to solicit a motion to approve staff recommendation with the changes that you have listed there, which reflects our discussion?
Yes, and you'd need to make two decisions as part of that. One, how you're going to have only four representatives, affiliate representatives. And then number two, which of the two versions of the Code of Ethics you'd be adopting? And Jason, what I heard from council, it would be the current code. And then we'd come back to you in the future with the revised code.
Very good. Steve, you want to take a stab at it?
Sure. When you say that again, please, Tom?
Sure, be glad to. So on page, on the second page of the bylaws, under Section Three, we would delete the words "in good standing." On the, excuse me, on that same page, we'd change it to seven at-large members and four affiliated members. Then on page H, Member Code of Ethics, we make it very clear that it is the current Code of Ethics. So on the next page, under Section Three-H, Member Code of Ethics. And then under Article Three, Meetings, Section 12, Reports and Recommendations to City Council, it would be reworded to make it clear that after every regular meeting, there will be a report to council. And that would not preclude a report after a special meeting. But make sure there'd be a report to council after every regular meeting. And there would be a similar report in parallel to the community as a whole. And those would be the changes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion. Well, let's get it made first. Is that your motion, Steve?
Exactly right.
Okay, and I have a motion. Okay, and I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong's discussion on the motion, and I'm going to start at the top of the list. Mr. Hammond?
No discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'm good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
No discussion.
Ms. Garcia?
No discussion.
Thank you, and back to you, Mr. Gregory.
So I'll keep my motion the way it is.
Very good. If there's no further discussion on the motion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. We move on now to item number 12, general fund financial forecast. Mr. Cornell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Ryan Cornell, Director of Administrative Services. Tonight, I have the opportunity to present to you the 10-year general fund fiscal forecast. The fiscal forecast is simply a management tool that presents estimated revenues and expenses based on past, current and projected financial conditions. This helps us identify trends that may have an immediate or long-term influence on government policies, strategic goals, or community services, and really just improves the decision-making and maintains fiscal discipline and delivers the essential services to our community. The forecast, along with the underlying assumptions and methodology, is kind of the purpose for tonight's presentation. We will continually look back at this forecast throughout the budget process, and it will be included in the final budget document. Additionally, the forecast should be monitored regularly and periodically updated. And as you'll see with a lot of my slides, I have overlaid our financial forecast that we pre-prepared in January 2020, over a lot of these charts and graphs. But really, at the end of the day, the forecast reinforces city council's commitment to long-term fiscal sustainability. We are in the early stages of the budget process, and so tonight's presentation doesn't require any sort of council action, although I will take any and all preliminary thoughts or directions that you would like to share. I included this slide only to kind of reiterate to the public that public input is encouraged throughout this whole process. There will be several areas and opportunities to participate. There currently is a community survey on our website. We have city council goal-setting and visioning sessions scheduled for Saturday, February 20th. And then really, several regular city council meetings between now and June. So let's, yeah, let's get right into it. So this graph represents actual revenues received by the general fund from 1112 to 1920, that's kind of represented in these light blue lines. And then here's our forecasted revenues looking out. So over the past five years or so, we've been hovering right around 40 to 45 million in annual revenues. A couple of items to note is, one, this graph starts at fiscal year 1112, which is kind of right the second year after we bottomed out from the Great Recession. So what this graph doesn't really kind of show is that the prior years, when our revenues were kind of hanging out here and showed the decline, and then really the slow growth coming out of the recession. There is a little bit of an increase in 1819 compared to the prior, the year before and the year after. That was primarily the sale of 625 Riverside. And then one last item to note is in fiscal year 2526, and I've said this numerous times, this is when the N12 half-cent supplemental sales tax sunsets. So since January of last year, the fiscal forecast did significantly change for two main reasons. One, obviously, is the coronavirus. It still continues to evolve, and it definitely had a negative impact to the general fund. And as you can see, this is what we had forecasted in January of 20, and our actual revenues are going to be well below that line solely because of the coronavirus. Now, in a more positive direction, in November 2020, and like we just had just mentioned, the voters did approve the measure J20, which is the one-set supplemental sales tax and has the opportunity to generate an additional $10 million each year for the next 12 years, unless it's ended by the voter sooner. So with our updated forecast, it looks like we're going to be hovering right around 57 to 63 million dollars each year prior to the expiration of N12, and then it drops back down to kind of the $60 million range. You'll kind of notice that I did get a little bit more optimistic on these later years, and you'll kind of notice that there's a straight line that's on a lot of these forecasts. And we do know that life doesn't work in a straight line, right? But the point is, is what we're trying to do is kind of cut the highs and lows in halves, right? As revenues go up and down, we're thinking that these little brackets are kind of the ranges, and we should be hovering kind of right around that line. And that's kind of what the forecast tries to do. Needless to say, right as we get into the latter years, year seven, eight, nine, 10, it is very difficult to predict what really is going to happen. But again, the forecast is more here to kind of just show current trends and analysis and see if there's anything worth noting. Again, this is nothing new, but the general fund receives about 75, 80% of its revenues from three sources: sales tax, property tax, and transient occupancy tax, which is also known as TOT. There are eight other sources comprising of the remaining 20%, which can be broadly categorized as charges for services, interest income, the sale of equipment and other assets, our grants, state, federal, and local license and permits and the like. But because such a large percentage of our revenues comes from sales, property, and TOT, the 10-year fiscal forecast really relies heavily on those projected revenues in those three sources. So sales tax represents the largest revenue source of the city, it's about 35% of the total general fund revenues. And when we factor in J20 revenues, that's kind of pushing closer to 45% now. The city has averaged around $15 million per year, that's including the N12 override. And then with fiscal year 2021, we did kind of assume a significant decline in sales tax revenues because of the coronavirus pandemic. However, we do know, and like I said from the last meeting, the economy did hit bottom in April 2020, and then was followed by kind of the best quarter after. So the forecast does predict certain segments of our business industries already returning to pre-pandemic revenues, with 2021 sales tax revenues now estimated to be about 15.7 million. There are other industries, such as the restaurants and hotels, that we are predicting it's going to take about one to three years to kind of get back to pre-pandemic revenues. I do want to point out a table in the staff report, it's labeled table number one on page two of nine, which really does break down each individual industry groups and what we're thinking is going to be the increase or decrease in revenues over the next two or three years. That table did come directly from our consultants, HDL. And kind of overall, they are expecting over the next two to three years, kind of a 3% to 4% increase year-over-year, which is kind of what that graph shows. I mentioned this already, too, the N12 monies does go away automatically sunset in 2526, so that does, the model does show that revenue going away. However, the model does show that the streets will continue to be funded at the same level as they have been. Since N12 is currently kind of the major funding source for street repair, should the N12 sunset without a replacement measure, there will be a $5.4 million decrease in our revenues, which means that either our street quality will worsen and streets do become more expensive to repair, the more they are allowed to deteriorate, or there will be a significant reductions in essential city services in order to continue to maintain funding at the street level as today. So an important decision, I think, in the Measure J20 expenditure plan, is whether or not to leave funding to replace this loss of revenue, should that occur in four years. Property taxes is the second-largest revenue source for this general fund, averaging right around 11 million dollars a year and about 24% of total revenues. Something that wasn't necessarily prevalent in the sales tax data is the state's triple-flip program, where the state essentially swapped the city's property taxes. It gave us more property tax revenues than what we were owed, but then decreased our sales tax allocation, with the goal kind of being it's a net wash to the city. So as we look at this graph, you know, we see out of the gate, you know, very strong increases in our revenues, but again, this has to do with triple flips. So when we kind of get down to 1617, the triple flip ended, or the 10-year plan. So that's why the dip is here and an increase here. But as you can kind of see, for the most part, outside of the Great Recession, our property tax revenues stayed fairly flat, but we, the last four years, have seen pretty decent inclines. What I had mentioned at the last council meeting for 2021, there was a court decision that kind of changed some of the RDA calculations or distributions. So we are seeing a little bit of a dip, but then we're kind of seeing that 2.5% growth for the remaining part of the forecast. We do consult with HDL again on our property taxes as well. They provide a five-year outlook for property tax revenues, and so I plugged those assumptions into our model and just kind of carried out those historical averages for the rest of it. One thing that is not included in the property tax model is the major specific planned developments that council approved last year. Those include Olson and Beechwood. And I'll kind of talk about those developments in a few slides. So transient occupancy tax, TOT, it had the huge impact from COVID. It was pretty much hotels and restaurants. Luckily for the city, TOT does represent the third smallest of the top three majors, so it is about 17, just under 20% of every general fund dollar it receives. The state controller's office did state in their analysis that those cities whose TOT revenues are over 40%, so almost twice as much as us, would have a much longer recovery ahead of themselves. I also think that our city is in a pretty good position, being in between the Bay Area and LA, and kind of attracting those driving markets, while the kind of the rest of the nation recovers from COVID and being comfortable with traveling in the airlines again. So, yeah, we were, you know, significantly off the mark from our forecast, but we do kind of predict that we will take, you know, significant strides to kind of get back to the pre-pandemic norms and then really kind of carry out the trend that we've seen since 1011. The other thing I wanted to kind of note, too, is the tourism activity that we saw in July, August, September, and October of this last year really showed a pretty rapid recovery compared to the historical trends. So I think that as soon as we get out of the pandemic, our TOT revenues should return to normal. The other thing I want to kind of note, too, that even during the Great Recession, there's never been a year-over-year decline in revenue. The only time we had a year-over-year decline in revenue was because of COVID. So changing gears and looking at expenditures, these are what we're considering are baseline expenditures, which is the costs as they are today. So there's no assumption or assumed increase in staffing levels out in the future. The only changes to personnel costs that's included in the forecast would be anything that the employee groups and the union groups have already negotiated in their MOU agreements. If there's an employee that's on a lower step and they get there automatically, or their step increases each year, those are included in the forecast, but nothing new outside of the contract. Operating costs, again, that's what they are today. It's with a five-year CPI average kind of throughout the years, 1 through 10. Debt service payments are current debts, so there's no new debt, there's no acceleration of old debt. It's just the current payments as they are today. And then really, our CPI and our set aside fundings based on our current inventory. Again, we're just more trying to see what our current expenses and how they're trending and what they kind of look at in the future. So the graph on the left are the expenditures by department and function. And I think, and I know it's small, but when I get to start further down in the budget process, I'll probably break these categories into bigger or smaller chunks. But it shouldn't be any surprise to anybody that the two largest departments in the general fund are for police and fire, and they represent just under $18 million in expenditures each year. And then really, it's the majority of those expenses in those departments are for paying for the salary and benefits of police officers and firefighters. And so that's kind of, if you look on the chart on the right-hand side, that breaks down the cost kind of more by object, by employee costs versus operating supplies and contracts and the debt. So as you can see there, our personnel cost is about 57% of the overall general fund spending, which is actually fairly low or kind of low compared to neighboring jurisdictions. And then one last thing to point out on this graph here, that the 12% that Shawna's capital, the majority of that remains to be the N12 street and repair and road maintenance. So when we overlay the projected revenues and expenses, we came up with a huge, you know, amount of funds available, but then, you know, the only reason why that was is because of the J20 additional revenues that are included. So we haven't necessarily identified what these J20 expenditures are, but we assume that whatever it is that is decided, 100% of those revenues will be expended. So we deducted the new J20 monies out and really have come up with the new funds available, hovering right around 2.3 to 4 million each year. And then, as you can see, when J20 falls off, we're less than $1 million of available funding. And I don't want to be too overly simplistic, but the only way we can increase these available funds is to either do two things, continue to increase revenues or decrease baseline expenses. So on increasing revenues, we did get a huge blessing with the community approving that with the one-cent J20 supplemental sales tax. But what other areas can we increase? We can look into charges for services, those are mainly the services we charge to developers for construction permits and planning. But if we were to do that kind of the right way, it does take a little bit of time, and there should be a study to kind of really analyze the whole year's worth of activity. But if that is a priority for city council, we will engage in a user fee study and really kind of do a deep dive into those costs. The other way of increasing revenue right is with development, but it does take a really long time to see those impacts. So, you know, as an example, the Beechwood development will add over 900 homes to our community, in which, right, the council has already approved the development agreement. However, it is not included in the 10-year forecast, mainly because we're waiting until they actually pull permits and start breaking ground, because a lot of these development agreements take five, 10, 15 years to start. And even then, once they start, it still takes a couple of years for the tax revenue to finance way into the cities, in the city general fund. But regardless of the development, the way these developments are set up is, yes, we'll get the property taxes, but we also get this, what we call a community facilities tax. So this is an additional tax on top of the property tax with the intent of the development making it a net zero impact to our community. So in other words, these new developments are set up and designed not to have adverse impacts to the existing residents in the community, but it's not designed to dig out the current deficiencies the community is currently incurring. Similar but different situation with commercial development, you know, depending on the business, we could see have significant increases in city revenues. But again, those usually take multiple years to develop and to really to generate money. And I think those are all good, and those are all good things to approve, and almost like what I was considering, planting seeds. You know, we're approving the Beechwood project, which is council planting a seed, and eventually in five, 10, 15 years, it'll start growing and it'll be benefit to the community. The other way to increase right available revenues, like I mentioned, is to look at our baseline services. This will be part of the overall budget process. If there are programs or functions that the city is currently doing... If there are programs or functions that the city is currently doing, that is no longer necessary. Then, you know, we should modify the services we offer. So I I think that a lot of that should be coming out of the goal, goal envisioning workshop in about a month from or twelve, twenty days from now. Okay. Oh, what does the forecast not include? And this is the exact same thing I presented to you last year with the variant or the difference only being the colors that I decided to use this year. But we have kind of four major areas that we kind of need a balance. And that's kind of the another question that we have as we develop this budget process is what's the appropriate balance between staffing levels and capital improvements and addressing our unfunded liabilities? So a as I walk you through these graphs, they should be very familiar because this is pretty much what I had presented last year. Because we were going down this path and COVID hit, and so it really took us for, you know, a curve ball. But these unfunded liabilities or these capital projects haven't necessarily gone away, just because COVID came around. So the first area is with labor agreements. And at January twenty twenty, we we hadn't approved labor agreements quite yet. And we we did get those approved in in March and April time after the forecast was developed. And they're good until December thirty first of two thousand and twenty two. So we have some time before we need to start negotiations again. But the next thing was was the labor force and and the understaffing of many of our service area. Now, like I said, measure J twenty will address a good part of this, but it's really kind of limited to the police, fire and streets programs. Those aren't the only departments that are understaffed. So again, this, this is a graph that I shared with council last year. It shows each individual and number of employees by kind of function. So this would be public safety and community services and the like. And then this line chart up here is the number of employees per one thousand F T E. And what you can see is that we peaked right before eight, nine, right before the Great Recession, before we we took a huge dive in our staffing. And really, we haven't even come back up to two thousand and seven, eight numbers. We're still that that kind of far behind. That last bar right there is kind of the the ideal or what we think would be an appropriate staffing level that we need today. Next, I wanted to kind of touch base on the unfunded liabilities. Last year, the the way this graph was was shown was more of a pie chart. But it really, I didn't think it, it really showed the emphasis of our pension liability enough. Right? Because that is the big elephant in the room, right? It's, it's our forty five million dollar unfunded liability. Now, the crazy thing that I find about this is we're actually in a better situation than most cities throughout our state. And and our funding status is about seventy five percent when you take in consideration our section one fifteen monies. But just like any other sort of debt, we're getting charged interest on this, on these monies. And the sooner we pay off this liability, the more money we'll get saved in the long term. I looked at the miscellaneous plan, so not the fire or the police plan, but just solely the miscellaneous plans. And if we were to reduce our repayment schedule from the twenty three years, which it is currently down to fifteen. That so that we paint off our our loans eight years sooner, we'd save about seven point four million dollars in in interest payments. However, in order to do that, we would have to increase our annual contributions by right around six hundred thousand dollars each year for the next fifteen years. Again, we don't necessarily need full on direction tonight. But during the budget process and this kind of this forecast is, you know, how much of this pension liability is on a priority? You know, if 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 council kind of gets a consensus that we want to pay off the pers. You, you know, the unfunded liability in twenty years, then I could update the forecast accordingly. Or alternatively, we could continue to do what we've been doing. And then kind of address our kind of our financial situation one year at a time. And if we do have discretionary or additional funds that we didn't think of, we can make kind of one time discretionary payments. And then those will just be kind of left out of the forecast and just kind of done on a year by year, one on one basis. The other large unfunded liability has to do with post employment benefits. This is also kind of known as O P E D. Past practice is just to kind of fund those liabilities on a pay go basis. And then we have made one times payments several years ago. But this one is is kind of weird that the accounting and the actuary does get kind of tricky. Where if we can get city council to commit to a funding plan. We could actually change some of our more restricted assumptions in calculating the O P E D liability. But in order to do that, that's kind of like, well, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg sort of thing? So I'm going to, I'm actually going to sit down with our actuary and then kind of really determine what a commitment will look like. And and how much of a liability we really need to fund, because that's the kind of, I shouldn't say the worst case, but we don't want to overfund these these programs. The last unfunded needs or items that are included in the forecast mainly deal with our repair and maintenance and replacement of current facilities and infrastructure. This is something similar to or similar that we do to our fleet and I T. Or we do set aside a little bit money each year so that when we need to, you know, replace a vehicle or a computer, we have the money already already set aside to do such. We really don't have that set up for our major, our major infrastructure and facilities. Mainly due to fiscal constraints and and unable to really get a consistent depreciation reserve. So we have taken a similar approach like we did with the pension liability. And we have set money aside approximately three point two million to kind of fund the repair and maintenance. Programs, but that's not nearly enough. Needed the the latest valuation estimates kind of has these structures a cost of approximately two hundred million. And given the life of these buildings, we should be setting aside probably a five million dollars each year. Of which about three billion would be the general fund's responsibility. Similarly, the city's street and pavement condition index has also demonstrated. That a proper investment in our streets and roads would be more closer to about ten million dollars per year than the five to six we've been putting towards it. And then lastly, things that are keeping in the back of our minds that there's significant, there's some significant capital improvements that will be, need to be constructed over the next ten years. The city is actively seeking federal, state, local grants to fund some of these projects. However, these grants are competitive. And we're kind of starting to get to the point where alternate funding strategies are needed, should the city be unsuccessful in giving some of these grants. These capital projects include the development of twenty nine thirty Union Road, which is the location for Fire Station Three. Plus other essential city operations, including a potentially a backup E O C, fire training facility, police substation and student range. Additionally, there's the Divine Street Bridge and the road realignment on the south end of town. There's the development of the northeast area over by the airport, including where we're creek bridge and the roundabouts. Realignment and construction of New Airport Road and Union Road. The construction of the forty six East Overpass. Fourthly, there's circulation enhancements on neighborhood road and cresting road corridor that we're trying to improve. As well as the extension of the twenty four street bridge. All of those major infrastructure projects are going to cost in the tens of millions of dollars are not included in the forecast. Okay, so that concludes my presentation for tonight. Like I said earlier, there are no formal actions required by city council. This is just the first steps of many more to come. But if you do think it's appropriate, we do want to get preliminary thoughts on staff's baseline assumptions in the forecast model. If there are things that you like, don't like, there's things that you want us to expand on or or get more better. Or there's more information that you would like for future council meetings. Go ahead and ask those and request those now and I'll include those in future meetings. Additionally, if there are other questions that you want to talk to me individually on, I'm more than welcome to sit down with each of the council members to go over those. So in addition, any insights to balancing our staffing levels or with the balance, I'm sorry. Any insight as to what the appropriate balance between our staffing levels, C I P and unfunded liabilities will help us on the preliminary planning of our budget for the next coming year. And then kind of lastly, if there's any preliminary thoughts on J twenty. If we're willing to kind of front load expenditures like we did with with the N twelve. And like I said before, you know, how should we forecast our street and road maintenance if N twelve is not renewed? That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate all the time and effort for that. So. Let's go to council questions, staff, questions, public input, and we'll start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we got a circle loop going on here. I can hear, but the I'm concerned about the basically the J twenty expenditures. And and you put it on the screen there, front loading. We have a lot of things we want to do. But again, I don't want to be spending and planning really before we get people engaged and and comment. In other words, especially the overtime oversight committee. And with regard to, you know, spending for police and fire and roads. I mean, we have plans and and things that we're obviously needing. Are we actually going to be spending any funds? Of the J twenty before it actually gets here or what's what's the plan with regard to funding actually being accepted here?
So the only thing that's truly already sort of, I should say, sort of, that's been identified as actions that council already taken. It's identified J twenty monies as the funding source. And this is just off the top of my head. It's it's the safer grant. We for the least for the first three years, we'll have the safer grant, but then they fall off. We had the fire engine for Fire Station Three on that November council meeting. We've had discussions about the data nine one one communication system. We've had discussions about the license plate readers at the north and south end of town. And then we've also had the the most recent dispatch center reorganization. And then lastly, two street additional street maintenance personnels. But those, all those actions is really just a fraction of the overall money we're going to get annually each year.
Still there, John?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I had my, it was off. I was started to talk without it. Let's see if I can recap. Ryan, those are seem to be mostly one time expenditures that you were naming off, but I'm thinking now of manpower, you know, that recurring expense. And I know Chief Lewis is actively looking for new officers and we want to get the right people on board and it takes time. I'm not sure if Ty can address that, but if he finds good folks ahead of time. Would we be able to, I guess, pay it forward with, you know, acquiring these folks before monies actually get here on J twenty?
Yeah, so so on in the accounting world or how I operate, we just look at things on a twelve month basis. So, yeah, whatever, you know, no matter what the timing of the revenue comes in, as long as in that twelve months, we're not spending more than what we receive. That's kind of the key there too. So so so, yes, if if he has officers and we can pull the trigger now, yes, we would come back to city council. Get authorizations, add those to the physician listing and then move forward.
Yeah, that sounds good. Just lost in your same budget year then. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I have a lot of questions. First of all, are these inflationary figures? And if so, how do we relate this to today's buying power?
There is an inflation component. We just looked at his historical C P I for the last five years and carried that forward.
Okay, so the the and these projections are only general fund projections, correct?
Correct. We are solely looking at general fund. We're not looking at the water enterprise. We're not looking at the sewer enterprise. In fact, it's more, it's the similar exercise that we do with the water and sewer with the, you know, the master capital master planning and the in the rate study planning. Where we look out ten years and then we kind of base our rates on that ten year horizon.
Okay, good. Now, personnel costs for most cities are about eighty five percent. So what's the difference between personnel and operating costs?
So it my my experience, Councilmember Strong, is that usually personnel costs hover right around two thirds of the general fund budget. What I what I've seen in other jurisdictions too is these half cent supplemental sales tax to be part of the general fund. It be its separate identifying fund. And so those street roads don't necessarily dilute that that denominator. But in our, in our case, we do show N twelve monies coming through the general fund and then out to the capital projects.
So that explains why we get those percentages then, at least to some extent.
Yeah, in part.
Now, I'm wondering why you're projecting that income from Beechwood, which if we look at his history as a guide, it should take at least twenty years to build that up.
I'm sorry, Beechwood and Olson are not included in the forecast.
Okay, all right, all right. I I thought you were including them from what you had said, so thank you for clarifying that. So the other thing is infrastructure is largely done through SLO C O G with state and federal money. So where is that in in your in your figuring right now? Because we usually only pay a very small percentage.
Yeah, so we so we still have a lot to to figure out. That was more just to kind of put it on the on the radar that this is an an item that we eventually need to address when we start constructing these these projects. And that's kind of another reason why we have Caskori on contract with us to kind of work with the state so that we could leverage our 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 grant funding opportunities a little bit better. We're just right. It's almost that worst case scenario. If we can't secure state or or federal funding, what do we do then? And so and look kind of looking at our current, you know, available resources and how much we could really afford to 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 make towards those those large projects.
Okay, because I like to do my budgeting on a realistic basis and not either assuming the best or the worst.
So so the the infrastructure projects are not included in the forecast. It's just more out out there of something that we need to eventually address.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I have for in questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia.
Did you call me, sir?
It is your turn.
Okay, I'm sorry. My my phone just went out. I just had a question, Ryan. Could you clarify again and tell us what our reserves, what percentage our reserves is at right now?
So so that's a good point, Councilmember Garcia. I didn't really touch base on on reserves. We're projecting our ending June thirty of two thousand and twenty one reserves to be right around forty five percent of general fund expenditures. Which is much better than the thirty percent or just over thirty percent we were initially anticipating. So we do have some additional, yes, resources available in our reserves if we if council chair chooses to to decrease those. And in our affiliate, I should have better numbers on the reserves side of things on our next budget discussion.
Okay, perfect. As you were talking about, you know, maybe potentially as a decision we could make to pay off the person. I wanted to remind everybody how much we what our percentage was on the reserves. But thank you so much for the for the forecast. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Councilman Gregory.
Okay, yeah, I just have a few questions, Ryan. And I'll try to state this as simply as I know how. So on the, I wanted to take a look at a convergence of graph or or forecasting. Of the use of the J twenty funds and when the community facility tax revenue really starts coming in to assist us. So I want to, I want to try to, I think this is a philosophical comment for the upcoming budget. And that the J twenty funds that we're spending, I think, are it's going to be really important for us to really go after one time spending. For a larger portion of that, of course, we're going to have to have. We're going to have to have ongoing expenses from the new staffing for more firefighters and more police on the street, you know, police on the street. And I understand, but I think there has to be a balance between what we do for the growth of our fire and safety and police departments. Staff wise and then also the physical improvement for those while we go along. At some point in time, we should be getting a benefit from the community facilities tax part of that. And what I'm really talking about at the end of the rainbow or the end of that graph is somehow we're going to have to replace. Some of the funding from N twelve tax funds for the half set tax. So you think that we could strategize our budget accordingly in our spending for J twenty? To be close to that point in two thousand and twenty five where we'll have. to be close to that point in 2025 where we'll have some, at least some trickle of money from the community facility tax funds to utilize so that we can offset the loss of the N-12 tax funds for the half-set tax?
So, we do currently get a little bit of CFD tax revenues from new development throughout our city. However, we won't get nearly as the magnitude as we would as soon as Beachwood is developed and Olson's developed. So really, the CFD taxes that the city receives is very minimal today and is not included in the forecast. Can, can we continue to keep J-20 expenditures, or I'm sorry, limit the ongoing J-20 expenditures so that if N-12 goes away, we can pick it up? Yes, we could plan, definitely plan for that. I would just more want to make sure that it's the consensus of council. That's the path that we want to proceed with.
Well, the, kind of the track or the plan is to spend a great deal, or most of the money for the first four or five years on fire and police improvements. And then at some point, we had to sort of balance between, you know, maybe all three roads, police and fire, maybe five years away or whatever. I just want to, I just think it's really important to discuss that far out because when you see a $5 million drop in the budget for roads all in one year, it's going to be a significant problem. So I just think that we should keep that sort of at the, at a very important threshold in budget planning for five years out.
Mr. Gregory, if I could, so we agree with you 100%. In fact, just as the forecast is a 10-year forecast, what Ryan and the two chiefs are working on are 10-year, essentially 10-year plans within each of their departments. And then streets also to augment the current five-year plan. And basically, we'll be able to give you 10-year plans with two options. One is if N-12 is renewed, either in part or in full. And secondly is if it's not renewed. And that way, we can make sure that any decisions we make in the first few years are cognizant of the council's long-term planning based on whether we have a renewal of N-12 or not. So it's absolutely crucial that this year's budget process focuses a lot of attention on the multi-year plan for the J-20 funds.
And then I think, I think those are most of my questions. But I would like to reach out to you, Ryan, to sit down with you on some of the graphs that you reviewed with us tonight. So I'll send you an email, reach out to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. If there are no further council questions, I'm going to go to public comment. I see no one lined up for public comments, so I'm going to close that, bring it back to the council. This is a receiving file, but Mr. Cornell has asked for our thoughts, if we have any, on his baseline assumptions, the appropriate balance between staffing levels, CIP, and unfunded liabilities, which is a huge gorilla. The, your opinion regarding front-loading J-20 expenditures and then major N-12, should that be limited to J-20 ongoing costs? If you have solid thoughts on that, now would be a good time to bring them out. If not, you don't. That's the way it goes. So let's start with Mr. Hammond.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Ryan, I formulated a question a while ago, right after I got off, and I can't remember it. But the, it had to do with our unfunded liabilities with regard to PERS. What is our current level of unfunded liabilities with PERS directly?
So, it's, so that our net unfunded liability, so that's the estimated cost out plus the assets we already have in, the net of those two is about $45 million.
Were we supposed to be, I think about this year, coming around to the point where we were getting the downhill side of things on paying that off?
So, yeah, so on paying down the unfunded liability, yeah, they increased our annual payments. And they kind of did that in a step approach where they kind of did bigger increases for a three- or four-year period, and then, yeah, it kind of been flattened out. I think this year that we're currently in is the last of those increases. And so moving forward, our minimum UAL payment should stay for the most part flat. That doesn't include any sort of accelerated or discretionary payments on top of that.
Exactly. And then we still have that fund where we're paying in. I can't remember the number, the name of it, where we were putting money aside and gaining interest to defray the increases that would be happening. That's still there. What's that balance? Where are we at on that?
You're putting me on, you're putting me on the spot, Mr. Hammond.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Give me four seconds. Hold on.
Well, it doesn't mean exact on that, Ryan. It's just, I'm just curious, you know, we're still building that fund up, obviously, to defray the increases in PERS, I believe.
Correct, yeah. And so at June 30th, 20, we had just a little over more, a little more than $7 million in that fund.
Right. And we retain that. It's, in other words, it's not sent to them. We gain interest on that. Those are our money, so to speak, but it's devoted to PERS, to defray it, basically.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, and you know, a lot of our budget, unfortunately, is determined by what the state and federal government does in certain areas. And that's unfortunate because it limits what we can do, and PERS is a prime example. Because PERS is more independent from the legislature and the governor than is the Public Utilities Commission. It's a very independent organization, and they make some assumptions that are absolutely wild sometimes as to how much revenue they're going to get in from their investments. And then they'll turn around and they'll vote their investments politically rather than for how much money they can actually make. And so they'll refuse to put the money into something that they don't personally approve of in their political philosophy. And that's a poor way to handle our money, but we suffer from it because then they come back to us and want us to make up the difference of what they didn't get in income. And that's part of our problem, and it's one of those parts of our problem that we don't have any control over. And it's wise to try to plan on how to cushion against that. But the quicker we can get out from under it, the better off we are. Part of our problem, I think, too, is that we had a lot of retirements just in the last couple of years. And we're not probably facing a whole lot of retirements in the very near future because we have a much younger crew now in our management positions. But I think you're doing a good job on the forecast as far as it goes because there's a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of speculation involved in this. So I'm in favor of receiving and filing with the acknowledgement that this is your best guesstimate, and there's a lot of areas that really are pretty gray. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. I am also ready to receive and file and would like to thank Ryan for the forecast as well. I'm, you know, I know we're going to have a lot to talk about at the goal-setting and vision workshop, so I'm waiting for that. Thank you.
And back to you, Mr. Gregory.
Yeah, Ryan, I think the, the, the most important part of the conversation is going to have to be the appropriate balance between staffing levels, CIP, and unfunded liabilities. And I don't know if this is an appropriate time to discuss that, but I think that's going to be our most crucial and difficult discussion because the J-20 funds are specified. They're almost like, you know, they're a special entity in itself. And so I think that the more detail that we pay attention to in the staffing levels, CIP, and unfunded liabilities, the more sound our budget will be. That's where I'd like to focus on personally. And then thank you for the report, and I'm willing to go through the receiving file.
Okay, so I'm looking at the questions that Mr. Cornell has given us. I'm pretty much in line with his baseline assumptions. I can't see any reason to question that. I agree with the comments about our staffing and our unfunded liabilities. Barring of the pandemic, that's going to be our huge wildcard, and that could really be the thing that hobbles us in the future. As far as front-loading J-20 expenditures, I'm with Mr. Hammond. I want to, I want to the greatest extent possible to make sure that our public panel has a pass at this before we start front-loading a lot of J-20 expenditures. So those are my thoughts. I entertain a motion to receive and file in any additional direction.
Mr. Mayor, so move.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Strong, second by Councilman Gregory, to receive and file the report. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. That is a huge amount of work and a huge amount of information. And I just wish more people had the opportunity to sit through that presentation because I think it's very elucidating and really points out the issues financially we're going to be looking at down the road. Item number 13, potential changes to sewer rates. Staff report, please.
You're muted, Matt. Unmute.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Sorry for the delay there. Have been some technical difficulties. Can you see my first cover slide there? All right.
Yes, we do.
All right, again, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Matt Thompson, a manager of the city's wastewater utility. I'm here to present the results of an effort that began well over a year ago. This is a new wastewater, or sometimes it's commonly called a sewer rates study. My goals for the limited time we have this evening are to present you the results of the study, briefly introduce some options for adjustments to sewer rates, answer any questions that you may have, and if time permits, hear your feedback. Our plan is to come back to your next regular meeting on February 16th so that we may discuss and decide upon a rates package and request your approval to begin the public process for adjusting rates, commonly called the Proposition 218 process. We have a lot of information to cover, so I'll be using slides prepared by our rates consultant, Bartle Wells and Associates. Alex Handler of Bartle Wells is with me this evening and available to answer questions. Bartle Wells and Associates is a small Bay Area firm with expertise in municipal utility rate studies and financing. They've completed over 1,000 similar water and wastewater rate studies for agencies across the Western United States. A quick overview of the presentation. I'll give you some background about the city's wastewater system and current sewer rates. I'll explain the financial challenges to the sewer fund, and then I'll present some options for adjusting sewer rates to bring back financial stability to the sewer fund. The city provides for collection, treatment, and disposal of wastewater for nearly every home, business, and institution in Paso Robles. The wastewater system includes 126 miles of sewers, 14 sewage lift stations, and a wastewater treatment plant with a capacity of 4.9 million gallons per day. The city must comply with stringent state and federal regulations for disposal of treated wastewater to the Salinas River. In 2016, the city completed a major upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant to comply with these regulations and prepare for a future recycled water system. The city financed the $47.2 million project with a low-interest state loan. The city is obligated to make an annual payment for this loan of $2,665,000 for the next 17 years. In 2014, during a prolonged drought, city council adopted a recycled water master plan. The plan includes producing high-quality recycled water at the wastewater treatment plant and using it to irrigate sports fields, golf courses, and vineyards on the east side of the city. This will improve the long-term sustainability of our water sources, help the city comply with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and reduce liabilities associated with continuous disposal of wastewater to the Salinas River. In 2015, the city moved ahead with the first half of the recycled water plan, which is to add tertiary treatment facilities to the wastewater treatment plant and produce high-quality recycled water. The city completed construction and commissioned these facilities in 2019. The city financed the $14.4 million project with a low-interest state loan. City received a $4 million grant. In conjunction with that loan, the city is now obligated to pay back the loan in the amount of $444,000 per year for the next 30 years. The city is obligated by state regulations to maintain the integrity of its sewer system so that sewage spills do not occur. In 2019, city council adopted a new wastewater collection system renewal strategy and master plan. The master plan anticipates the city will complete a variety of repair and replacement projects over the next 30 years with a cumulative cost of $50.5 million in $2,019. Financially, the wastewater utility is operated as a self-supporting enterprise that relies primarily on revenues from sewer rates to fund the cost of providing service. The last time the city conducted a full sewer rate study was 2011, prior to the major wastewater treatment plant upgrade. That study resulted in a gradual five-year increase to sewer rates, the last of which occurred in July 2016, over four and a half years ago. The 2011 study resulted in a change to 100% usage-based rates, which, as you'll see in a minute, is really not consistent with many other Central Coast communities. And more importantly, is not consistent with the fact that about 80% of all wastewater system expenses are fixed and don't vary with usage. This is a problem we set out to fix with this current study. And perhaps as a result of rates not being adjusted for nearly five years, Paso Robles sewer rates are now relatively low compared to other Central Coast communities. Here's a look at the results of a survey comparing current Paso Robles sewer rates to many other Central Coast communities. This is for a typical residential customer with an average winter water use of six units per month. You can see that Paso, highlighted with the red arrow, is at the lower end of the range. Notice the lighter blue color of the bar, which denotes Paso, current sewer rates are 100% usage-based. This is very unique to Paso. The majority of other Central Coast communities have a fixed monthly sewer bill, or at least a significant fixed component to the sewer bill. Here's a look at a low-water use customer in Paso Robles, highlighted with the blue arrow. Those customers currently enjoy the lowest sewer bills in the Central Coast. This is a result of having a 100% usage-based bill. That kind of rate structure gives customers the ability to really drive down their sewer bill. And here's a look at a high-water use customer in Paso, somebody using twice the amount of water in the winter as a typical customer. Only about 10% of our residential customers are at this high level. You can see they pay significantly more than typical customers. Again, this is the consequence of a 100% usage-based sewer bill. All right, last survey slide. I promise, this shows a typical commercial sewer customer in Paso Robles, like an office building using 10 units of water per month. You can see Paso is currently at the lower end of the range. Notice from each of the bars in this chart that nearly all communities have a significant usage-based component for commercial sewer bills, as denoted by the lighter shade of purple. This is because commercial customers are very different from residential. Whereas residential customers are a fairly homogeneous group, commercial accounts are highly varied. We have everything, for example, from a small mom-and-pop shop ranging up to a very large brewery. A usage-based sewer bill is necessary to properly recover the cost of providing sewer service to such a wide range of sewer usage. Now, there's reasons why the city has among the lowest sewer rates in the region. It's because the city has for many years gone to great efforts to minimize its costs. Here's a summary of what the city has done to contain wastewater system costs. Here's a summary of what the city has done to contain wastewater system costs. We pursued grants, the four million dollar grant I mentioned earlier, associated with the tertiary project. We pursued the best financing available for both the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and the tertiary treatment project. We secured a one point seven percent low-interest loan from the state of California compared to conventional financing. By getting that low interest, those low-interest loans, we've saved an estimated ten million dollars on debt service payments over the repayment term in the loans. We've done our best to have the most efficient wastewater system possible. An example of that is the switch to ultraviolet light disinfection in two thousand and nineteen. By doing that, we've seen a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar per year decrease in chemical costs, for example. And we do this with a minimum level of staffing by having automated control systems. We don't have to staff the plant night and day. We can staff it during the day and use just one standby operator in the evening and evening hours. And so we've done our best to maintain an efficient operation of the minimal staffing levels. And with regards to the master plan for improvements to the wastewater collection system, the master plan had recommended we start investing significantly in repair and replacement of that system, but we've opted to only gradually increase those expenditures in the coming years so as to facilitate a phase in of necessary rate increases. Despite our best efforts, the sewer fund is still challenged financially. In two thousand and nineteen, Templeton Community Services District completed a major sewer project and stopped sending wastewater to the city. Consequently, revenues to the sewer fund have decreased by approximately seven hundred thousand dollars per year. We've also increased costs associated with the state loan for the tertiary treatment facilities. Last year, the city began paying that additional four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year for the tertiary treatment loan. So we've been operating in a deficit for the last several years and spending down the cash reserves of the sewer fund. This is a big problem. We have a need to complete the sewer system projects identified in the master plan, but the current sewer rates do not provide enough funding for such projects. We are obligated to the state to ensure we bring in enough revenue to cover at least one hundred and ten percent of our annual debt payments. We've not been meeting that obligation in recent years. This is really a problem, especially if we're ever going to rely on the state again for financing for projects such as the recycled water distribution system. These are the reasons why the city hired Bartle Wells and Associates last year to prepare a new sewer rates study. One of the first tasks Bartle Wells set out to do is to build a financial model of the sewer fund so that they can make accurate financial projections and rate adjustment recommendations. With these financial models, it's really important that we make sound assumptions. So here's a quick list of the key assumptions we made. First, all the expense projections are based on the already-approved city budget. In the interest of minimizing expenses, we are proposing to not add any staff for the next five years. For new customers, we are assuming there will be a fairly modest addition of one hundred equivalent dwelling units per year for the next five years, consistent with projections from the community development department. And for capital expenditures, we've incorporated the capital improvement program from the two thousand and nineteen master plan, but again, we've reduced the funding of projects in the early years in order to minimize the necessary upfront increase in sewer rates needed. We excluded any funding for the recycled water distribution system because our plan is to fund that project through future sales of the recycled water. And for new development, our expectation is that developers will pay for sewer projects necessary to serve their development projects. These are the results of running these assumptions through the financial model. The city has an immediate need to eliminate annual budget deficits and restore financial stability. Significant rate increases are needed soon to ensure compliance with obligations associated with each of the loans I described earlier. The study recommends sewer rates increased, be increased twenty-four percent on July first this year, followed by increases of eight percent per year for each of the following years. From a purely financial perspective, it would have been more ideal to have a larger upfront increase. So we looked at this option B, which is to increase the rates fifty percent this year. However, we recognize such a large increase simply would not be palatable at this time. So we're recommending this option A, which is to increase the rates more gradually over time. This chart is to illustrate why a significant increase is needed this year. Each of these bars represents the total expenditures of the sewer fund each year, and the red line represents anticipated revenue with the proposed rate increase option A. You can see that for the current fiscal year, expenses are much greater than revenues. And even with the twenty-four percent increase becoming effective July first this year, revenues are just enough to cover expenses next fiscal year. And we don't get to a place where we receive enough revenue to rebuild the depleted cash reserves of the sewer fund until two to three years from now. Some of the other important recommendations of the study relate to the structure of the city sewer bills. For residential sewer bills, the study recommends that because eighty percent of the sewer system costs are fixed, the city should transition to rates with both a fixed and usage-based component. And I'll show you some options for doing that shortly. This will greatly improve revenue stability and bring our revenues much more in line with expenses. Many of our customers have become accustomed to having some control over their sewer bills. We recommend retaining a usage-based component to the sewer bill because it gives our customers some control. With the current rate structure, we've had a problem with the winter water use average varying greatly from year to year, which results in highly variable revenue. We recommend fixing this by using a longer three-year average of winter water use rather than just the prior winter's billing data. We've also taken a closer look at the utility billing data and noticed there is much more variability in water usage during the month of December compared to January and February. This is because we can sometimes have very dry Decembers, which can lead people to continue irrigating their landscaping well into December. I think this current winter is an example of that. To correct this, we are recommending changing the winter water use survey period to be just the months of January and February. Lastly, for residential sewer bills, we've had a bit of a problem with some customers artificially reducing their water usage during the winter months in order to drive down their sewer bills. In some cases, their water usage can be lower than what is needed to take care of basic sanitary needs. We want to remove this incentive by establishing a minimum monthly sewer billing basis of two units. This is equivalent to typical low daily water use by a single person. For commercial sewer bills, we haven't experienced many problems with the current all-usage-based rate structure. It aligns well with a high amount of variability in that category and is consistent with many other Central Coast communities. So we recommend keeping that structure, but with one refinement. For the lower-end water users, it's important they be billed enough to offset our mostly fixed expenses to provide them sewer service. So we're recommending establishing a minimum commercial charge that is set equivalent to the residential fixed charge. This will not be charged in addition to the usage rates. It would only come into effect when their water usage is less than two or three units per month. Now, switching back to residential rate structure, we put a lot of effort into presenting you three rate structure options that will all work to restore the financial condition of the sewer fund. I'm going to briefly introduce these options, anticipating we will come back to this section on February sixteen. All three options are a hybrid of fixed and usage-based components with varying amounts of each. Option A is to maintain the existing usage-based rate of seven dollars and eighty cents per unit for the next five years and only increase the fixed charge. This makes it easier for customers to know exactly what their sewer will be in the future. This option moves us away from a one hundred percent usage-based rate, which is a step in the right direction, but it still gives our customers quite a bit of control over their sewer bill. This option is our preliminary recommendation, but again, I want to emphasize that all three of these options will work financially. So this may come down really to a matter of preference. Option B is to move to a sixty percent fixed component and a forty percent usage-based charge. This provides a higher level of revenue stability for the city, but still gives customers some ability to control their bill. Option C is to set the fixed charge at eighty percent of the total bill, which is equivalent to the fixed expenses of the wastewater operation. This option provides the highest level of revenue stability and the lowest level of individual customer control. Here's another way to look at the volumetric versus fixed sewer rate components. There's a spectrum between our current all-volumetric sewer rate structure on the left and totally fixed rates on the right. There are pros and cons to each. I would highlight for volumetric rates, there is less revenue stability, but it's most beneficial to low-water users, which typically includes those with low or fixed income. For fixed rates, the higher the fixed component, the greater the revenue stability. The trade-off is that customers would have much less ability than they do now to minimize their sewer bill. So some might argue that this is more beneficial to high-water users. This chart is meant to illustrate what I mean. You can see, for the grouping on the far left, for our current rate structure, there is wide variability in sewer bills between low-water users and high-water users. I'd contrast that with option C, which is the grouping on the far right. You can see that with a high-fixed component, there will be much less variability between low-users and high-users. The two options in the middle, A and B, I think strike a good balance between the pros and cons of usage-based and volumetric components. Something I'd like to highlight on this chart is that notice that for the average user in Paso, which is represented by the middle bar in each category, the total sewer bill in five years will be roughly the same regardless of which option you choose. Here's a preview of how the various options would be presented in a public notice to all customers. You can see that with option A, the usage-based charge would remain the same for the next five years, but only the fixed charge would increase such that typical residential sewer bill would be about twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents more per month than it is currently. With option B, you have a higher fixed component and less reliance on the usage-based component. So you see a slight reduction in the usage-based component such that it's only five dollars and forty cents per unit instead of seven dollars and eighty cents per unit currently. And with option C, you have the highest fixed component and much, only twenty percent of the total bill depends on usage. And so you see a great decrease in the usage-based component from seven dollars and eighty cents per unit currently down to two dollars and seventy cents per unit in five years from now. Turning to commercial rates. Again, our recommendation is to maintain the existing one hundred percent volumetric structure. This is how it would look in the public notice. The existing usage-based rate would increase from seven dollars and eighty cents per unit currently to nine dollars and sixty-seven cents per unit on July first, and then gradually increase to thirteen dollars and fifteen cents in year five. We did look at an alternate option to establish a modest fixed charge for the commercial category, but decided not to recommend that because it would have shifted costs from larger users to smaller businesses. And we recognize that would not be the right thing to do at this particular time. All right, that concludes my presentation at this point. I'd like to be available to answer any questions you have. If time permits, perhaps we staff can get some feedback from you about the proposed residential rate structure options. Again, we're planning to come back to your next meeting on February sixteenth with an example public notice. At that time, staff will be asking for your approval to move ahead with the public process of notifying all sewer customers of the proposed rate increases and setting a date for the protest hearing. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Very good, thank you. Questions, Mr. Hammond? John, you with us?
Yeah. Yeah, I think again, one slide that showed residential rate impacts is very, very telling on that, Matt. I mean, what, how soon, I guess, if we made a decision, would things change with regard to people seeing this on their bills?
Assuming you were to move forward with the public process of adjusting rates starting next meeting, we'd have to go through a fairly long process of where we provide them a forty-five-day period to submit any written comments or protests. We're planning to schedule a public hearing, what's commonly called a protest hearing, in April. And assuming the majority of affected customers do not protest, and you were to approve the changes, the first adjustment would become effective July first this year.
July first, okay, yeah, this is basically a two eighteen process, of course, but, okay, that was my main question is, obviously, it's no question we have to do this, but I just, well, I'll make comment at the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, I have a question, and maybe I'm a little confused by the chart. But would these use costs be reduced by the fixed rate? In other words, would you get, for instance, an option A? How much use might be free because you're paying a fixed rate? One unit? Two units?
This proposed structure with option A is there would be no free units. You would pay a fixed charge plus a usage-based charge depending on how many units you have. And with our proposed minimum, that would be a minimum of two units.
Oh, okay, so what we're saying is if somebody takes an extended vacation for a trip around the world and is gone for six months or a year, they're still going to have a monthly bill to pay?
That's correct, sir, because we still have to maintain capacity in the sewer system to serve that property whether they're present and using the system or not.
Okay, that's a hard sell, thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Matt, I don't have any questions right now. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Yeah, Matt, I'm looking at dash one, figure E S dash one, where you have the current structure rate, A, B, C, all next to each other, the bar graph. Very revealing slides I want to talk about. I have questions about it. This one, that's it, right there. So I'm looking at this, and option A would, it would take their, their use or their low use, option A would go from thirty-nine to fifty-two ninety-eight if we just went with option A, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So over time, what, so how would this change then on an annual basis? So let's say if we went to option A at forty-two percent fixed, fifty-eight percent volumetric, the fixed rate stays the same and then... the fixed rate stays the same and then the only rate that goes up is the volumetric from year to year?
A correction to that, with option A, the fixed rate will increase gradually over the fixed, over the five year period. The volume based or usage based rate of $7.80 per unit would remain, would remain the same over those five years.
So, so it'd be a fixed rate on the volumetric and then just an increased on the fixed. Very interesting. So, and the, the highest, the highest one in option C, it's not quite double, but almost double, but then the volumetric rate drops dramatically, correct?
That's correct. Instead of the volumetric rate being $7.80 per unit with option C, it reduces to something like $2.40 a unit. That's why you see much less, uh, variability between the low use customer and the high use customer under option C.
And over five years, would that happen anyway? The, where you see the, all the rates getting closer together for the usage or would the option C rate just stay a little? I just want to know what happens. I'd like to see five years next to each other. It'd be hard to see on this bar, bar graph.
Yeah, we would have to present four other similar graphs. Um, if, if, if it's your desire, we could, we could try and put something together like that before February 16th.
For me, um, I'll, I'll reserve my comment, but I'm trying to extrapolate what the cost would be for a, like an app, to me, an average customer citywide. Is this an average user? There is no, oh, there you have an average usage base. So that would, that would be currently an average user is paying $78 a month.
A slight, a slight correction to that. I want to, I want to, I want to be clear on this. If we were to keep the existing 100% volumetric structure, but apply the proposed rate increases, the average customer which uses six units of water per month in the winter would, would pay $78.95. That's the, that middle bar average. You can see for options A, B, and C, the average user ends up paying roughly the same for all three of the options we've presented.
That's the average user, which is the, the average of the city.
That's right. And if I can show you a chart that sort of shows the statistics, but, that's the average, the six units per month. And, and the purple bars that you see, the potentially very high rates, uh, only about 10% of all of our sewer customers have rates that are that high.
I think I understand the chart. Thank you. Very good.
Okay. If there are no more questions of staff, we'll go to public comment. But actually I thought you were going to give us a second shot. I'm sorry. If there are, if there are more questions, let's start over at the top, Mr. Hammond.
Okay, I could get it turned on. Um, Matt, the last question really, I think at this point in my mind is we're not really allowed to charge any more than a cost to run a system. So it's not like the city is making a profit on this. Um, I mean, we have to account for all the infrastructure and everything, but it is what it is. Um, and we're already behind the eight ball here, so to speak, but it, that is true, that we cannot charge any more than it takes to, to run it.
That's absolutely correct. The state law, the California constitution, proposition 218, we, it's very formulaic. We determine what our costs are and we adjust our rates to generate enough revenue to cover those costs and nothing more.
And the costs that we do have are not really discretionary too much. I mean, you have made, obviously in your testimonies, a lot of great, implementations to the plant that has saved us a lot of money, but, um, again, we're not exorbitant in how we run it, obviously.
That's correct, sir. We've, we're keeping up with the very stringent regulatory requirements, but also preparing for a future where we're going to need recycled water and really not a whole lot more. It's pretty basic.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Yes, and I, it, it just feels like we're, we're punishing the low income conservation oriented customers. So was there a calculation for keeping the fixed rate constant and increasing use fees instead?
Yes.
I, no, no, sir. We, I want to be clear. We currently have no fixed component.
I know. What if, what if we had a fixed component, but we didn't increase that every year? Instead, we increased the use fee every year.
That would increase the dependency of our total sewer bill on usage.
Yes.
Which has been a problem for us historically for revenue stability reasons. We are proposing to transition towards a more reliance on a fixed component to a sewer bill. So we did not propose any options that would have been included increasing the usage rate.
Is it possible to make that calculation? May, maybe because this almost seems like it's punishing conservation.
Well, we think that o, option A is the closest to the existing rate structure and it still gives low water users the, the ability to minimize their sewer bill if they choose to.
Excuse me, um, Mr. Strong, this is Christopher Luckel.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just want to just add a little something here, um, when we're talking about conservation. So keep in mind that this is wintertime water use. So this is largely non-discretionary water use for households. So most of the discretionary water use and conservation is, is focused on outdoors because that's where the vast majority of it is. So the low water uses don't necessarily mean that they're better at conserving water. It just means that there's probably fewer people in the household. The idea with this structure is to target indoor wintertime water use. So keep in mind, that's largely non-discretionary water use.
Okay. So fewer people in the household only means they have less money to spend. Correct?
That's, that's the way I see it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes. Okay, Matt, I'm just trying to make this simple for me in my mind of thinking this. So I'm looking at my, at my water bill right now and, uh, like you said, uh, normally a person, a household would use six units. So I use seven units and it's at $7.80 a unit, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And so an option A, if I were to maintain that, what I normally use, the seven units at 780, and I maintain that, that's kind of what option A is, right? Cause the 780 stays the same?
Yes. So you can continue to do the same math calculation, but what it would mean is, is come July 1st of this year, your monthly bill would increase by $11.40. That's our proposed fixed component in the first year. And I could go back to the chart, which shows what the, what the fixed component would be over time.
So in July, it would automatically go to the 11 or that's if I use more water in the summer?
It would, it would be a fixed charge for all residential customers. And so it would automatically go to $11.40. It would increase $11.40 per month.
Okay. I gotcha. And it's just for the seventh, for the, uh, summer months?
No, the way it works is we survey winter water use. We're proposing to do that just for the months of January and February, and that will become the basis of your sewer bill starting July 1st of this year.
Okay, got it.
Now, a slight, I want to correct that. In the subsequent years, we're proposing to make that change happen in April of each year instead of July. So there would be less delay between the time that your winter water use is surveyed and when your bill changes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Gregory.
All right, Matt. So I'm gonna give you an opportunity to help me understand this clearly now. So in option A, one of the things you stated is that their variable use rate is going to be fixed. Correct?
Correct.
At $7.80 throughout. That for the next several years, is that right?
Yes, and through, throughout the five year period of this rate period.
And then would we adjust the fixed rate a little bit each year? Is that what you'd do?
Yeah, let me show you this again. Can you see this?
Yes.
This is option A, this, this first group. Your sewer usage charge would remain at $7.80 per unit like it does currently. But you would see it increase on July 1st, $11.40 per month. That has to gradually increase over time to, to meet our expenses such that in by 2025, the, the monthly sewer bill for each residential customer would be an additional $29.58 per month.
So what I like, what I, so what's interesting about this one is that your sewage usage variable rate is totally controllable by the customer. So if they use more water, they pay more, but it's a flat rate, correct? And then what you see is you increase from zero to $11.40 for a fixed rate for the first year, second year to $15 for a fixed rate, and $19.24, and then finally 29. So their increase, their monthly increase is really only going to be $11.40 for the first year. And if they keep conservative use of their water, they could control their, their bill pretty well. And that's, so that's, that way that stays the same, same all the way across. Okay.
Yeah.
I understand that. So that's probably the least painful for somebody who is financially. But it's actually better for them to go to the option C that nobody's going to want to do that. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Do we need to go around again for more questions?
Hammond's good.
Fred?
Strong's good.
Hurry up.
I'm good, sir.
Okay, Steve, I'm assuming you're okay?
Good.
Okay. So we are going to open the public comment section. And after all that, I have no one waiting to publicly comment. So we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. And of course, our recommendation is stated there in your agenda. We need direct staff to bring back a specific rate proposal with options from February 16th, so we can begin the proposition 218 process. Mr. Hammond?
Well, again, I, I, I think that one slide that I was talking to earlier, uh, where it showed actually residential rate impacts, I would definitely prefer option A to begin. Uh, I mean, I want to make this as gradual as an impact to the customers in the city as possible. Uh, although our overall goal is to get to option C where it's more level, more consistent. Um, so again, whatever language it takes to make this, uh, begin into the 218 process is what I would recommend.
Thank you. Mr. Strong.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I got a lot of emails, like I think a lot of you did. And so if you'll bear with me a little bit, I'm going to try to maybe elucidate a little bit on our history on this. So after 60 years of not improving our plant because nobody wanted to pay more in sewer rates, we had no choice. We were in serious violation of state pollution laws. We were fined for those violations at the rate of $3,000 a day until the amount got to nearly a million dollars. At that point, we were informed that they were being nice to us, and if we didn't immediately proceed to upgrade the plant, the rate would go up to $10,000 a day in fines or over $3 million a year. Regardless of that, we still had the ongoing expenses of chemicals, repairs, maintenance, and disposal of the remaining sludge and polluted water. The only other alternative would be for the state to take over the system and charge all customers whatever their rate would be to cover costs and administration from Sacramento. That estimate was much, much higher than the cost we would incur by doing it ourselves. The state did offer us a low 1.7% loan rate to fix the plant, but they took the $924,000 in fines. We set the rate then to satisfy the costs for the much improved sewage disposal based upon current usage. We also calculated that usage based upon water usage per customer. Unfortunately, the state went into drought and water shortages, shortages, uh, shortly thereafter, and the state imposed mandatory water rationing with no consideration for local water supplies. That reduced usage, um, also meant much lower bills that no longer covered debt cost. Even that was not the last blow to our income. Templeton was our largest customer, as shown in the presentation, at 700,000 a year. And when they built their own plant and discontinued their use, it made it impossible for the current sewer rates to cover our costs. Because we then were also hit by COVID-19 for a great loss of customer income, we have hesitated as long as possible to raise rates. However, we do have the option of easing the pain by phasing the increase in over a five year period, which does cost a little more in the long run, but is much more manageable for our customers than a large increase now. That would be preferring option A over options B or C. That is a choice available to the city council now when we set the rates. However, it'll take three of us to do that. The only other alternative, because our sewer plant, sewer plant is an enterprise fund, is to state that it is bankrupt and let the state take it over with much higher rates than we now have, or sell it to a private perfa, perfa, for, for profit company, which would probably, based upon other enterprises of that type in the state, result in double to triple the present rates. Those customers who couldn't pay would then have their service cut off and their structure condemned requiring immediate vacancy. So I find all of those choices unacceptable. And although I, I do like the usage rate, if it's that, it's difficult to actually calculate how much income we've got in order to pay our bills. I think I have to go for option A in, in this particular case, even though I still feel like it does discourage, uh, some legitimate conservation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. We still, by the way, by the still way, when this goes into effect, we will still have one of the lowest rates in the entire region, this entire region of California. So it's pretty good.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
You know, it hits us all at a hard time right now, and the reason it's, um, such a high increase is because we haven't had an increase in such a long time. Um, but I, I agree with Mr. Gregory that the option A with the 780 being consistent, then it would help, uh, the ones that, the, I prefer the, the sewer usage rate. Um, and then, um, people can, uh, can manage, um, their, their budget better that way. So that's what I would, I feel is pretty reasonable at the, at the time.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory.
So, um, Matt, can we go back to what the, uh, averages are for other cities, just briefly?
So this is the most representative. This is for average customer Paso Robles.
Take our number where it is now, 4680, okay? And if we go, and this is more, um, what I think really helps the general public, I know it helps me is if I could see dollar for dollar what the change is going to be. So if I were to keep my usage the same as last July 1st, and I had the $11 fixed fee added to my bill, what would my bill be? what would my bill be for this coming first of July?
Well, assuming you're at six units, in this example, your current bill is at forty-six dollars and eighty cents. So it'd be forty-seven, you'd add eleven dollars and forty cents to that, so.
So if people were, so my commentary is this, if people were to be consistent in their in their usage, they're, they're gonna have an eleven dollar increase.
Yes.
And that increased in the following year another three or four dollars instead of eleven, correct? And so you have a gradual increase in your fixed rate. It also gives those people the opportunity to be more conservative in their use, they need to be. But by having a fixed rate going up like that, it protects our our wastewater fund by having a greater fixed rate rate, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, so in this example, you know, with additional eleven dollars and forty cents per month, starting July first, you know, pass those rates would be more in line with, for example, the city of Lompoc, which is more in the middle of that range.
Right. So I think just for, and and you guys are the experts, Matt, and and you're a consultant. But for the general public, it'd really nice to see low, medium, and high, and what it would mean to those people with those kind of rates. I mean, July first is probably one of the higher months of the year where you're using most of it. So that people could really see what the difference is. I mean, most part, it's gonna be eleven dollars and forty cents more, right?
Yeah.
And if they ever changed our rates for the last four and a half years, that's two dollars and eighty cents a year. We haven't been raising the rates. You take it all in the first year, go up from there. So I, I'm gonna, I think, I know we're not voting on this at this time, but for discussion purposes, the illustration of that cost is really critical to people who don't quite understand the increase in the rate. But I'm, I like, I like option A too, because the, at least, at least the variable rate is fixed and they won't know, they they know that's not gonna go up.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing consensus on the count, on the council for directing staff to bring back option A as the specific rate proposal for February sixteen.
I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor Hammond has a question back from Matt. I just thought of it. Matt, what about working in as some sort of a CPI? Is that possible over a period of time where people, I mean, we all know things go up, but what I'm getting at is that it's not such a big hit. And it's minimal every year that it changes, but it keeps us from accumulating a lot of impact, you know, when things do change. Is that?
Yeah, that that's a, that's a great suggestion, and and I wanna, I wanna be clear about this. When we put together this study, we made projections of what our capital cost would be and what our operating expenses would be. And we inflated those costs over time based on the particular inflation rate for each category. Because not everything increases at the same rate, right? Construction costs increase at a different rate than power costs increase, right? So we made accurate projections about what the inflation would be. And that is reflected in the proposed rate increase amounts of twenty-four percent, followed by four years of eight percent per year. Furthermore, with Proposition two eighteen, we're precluded from adjusting rates beyond five years from now. So we're gonna have to get into a mode where we revisit these sewer rates about every five years and do this again based on accurate projections at that time.
All right. Thank you very much. That's enough.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question now.
Go ahead, Fred.
Matt, when you say increased by twenty-four percent, that would only be for a specific amount of usage if it's a fixed rate that we're increasing, right?
If you go with option A, the base charge will remain the same. And so, yes, the twenty-four percent increase is based on how it would affect the average customer.
Okay, the person who uses seven units.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a bigger percentage for a real low user, so he's a single person.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody's existing sewer bill is only fourteen dollars or or sixteen dollars, yeah, an eleven dollar and forty percent, forty cent increase July first is is a greater than twenty-four percent increase. So we had to, we had to present this for the average customer in town.
Okay, and if you're a real high user, then it's a much lower percentage of increase.
It could be, yes, it could be seen that way, yes.
Okay, and those figures, when you show it going to eleven dollars and something the first year and then fifteen the second, that's not fifteen over and above the eleven. Right?
Correct. Um, that would be.
So it's actually only a four dollar and thirteen cent increase.
Yes, sir. That that fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents in that second year represents what the fixed charge would be that year. That's not an additional fifteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Good. I think that's very important for people to understand. Otherwise, it'll scare the heck out of them.
Steve, may I ask one more question? This is you.
You have the floor, sir.
So Matt, and then in your calculations, did you make assumptions about the income from your wastewater treatment? Water? If you treat water, then water.
Well, currently, all the wastewater that we generate is disposed to the Sleness River. We aren't receiving any revenue from that. But we did factor in revenue from things like septicage receiving and some of the activities we have now. Now, in the future, when we start selling recycled water, that revenue will be used to pay back the infrastructure needed to deliver that recycled water. That's the project we call the Recycled Water Distribution System. So, uh, no, we do not count any revenues from sale of recycled water as part of this sewer rate study.
And then my other, my other question is, as we get, you know, we've have these large specific plans that have been approved five or ten years down the road, and we have another fifteen hundred or two thousand homes hooked up to the system. Does that assist our budget at all, or is that, are we looking at?
It it does, it does. It does result in a modest increase. You have to keep in mind, we currently have ten thousand plus customers. And what we have proposed, we have included in the study is to assume we would have a modest one hundred equivalent dwelling units added per year. And that, you know, that that's all the growth in town, both commercial and residential. And that's consistent with community development's conservative projections.
And then I, I will, I think it's really important, like, again, with what Fred Strong said is that the increase per year would be nicer graphic to see there than the fixed rate every year, or at least show that it's only an increase of four dollars or whatever.
Yeah, I I think what we're gonna do for February sixteenth is, assuming there's consensus around this option A, we're gonna, we're gonna provide a draft two eighteen notice that will provide a table in it which shows sample bills. So you can easily look up, like a matrix, you could easily look up what your current usage is and look, look in the table and see exactly what your sewer would be, the total amount for any given period, time period.
And so, Matt.
Thank you.
Maria, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Matt, when you do that, you're gonna do it with the April, since that's what you're gonna start calculating for? The month?
We're, we are going to, you know, to clarify, our proposal is to change the winter water use survey period from what is currently December, January, and February, and we're gonna change that to be just January and February.
Okay. So on your draft, when you do the the next one, is, are those the two months that you'll put in there?
Uh, well, it'll be a generic table that any customer could use. It'll show a range of usages that any customer could look up what their current usage is and see what their bill would be, assuming that their usage did not change. So there will be a range there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Are there any other council questions? Is there a motion to direct staff for a specific rate proposal so they can bring back the appropriate presentation on February the sixteenth?
I'll, I'll make a recommended motion that our staff bring back option A for us to review another period.
Hammond, second.
Kind of motion by Councilman Gregory, seconded by Councilman Hammond. If there's no further discussion on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Do we get a vote for it?
Garcia.
Yeah.
My apologies, Councilmember Garcia.
It's okay. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on, item number fourteen, Public Right-of-Way Encroachment Agreement for Fair Sky Properties LLC. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, city engineer David Athie will be making the presentation in a moment.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can.
And can you see the screen?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here tonight to talk about, I'm David Athie, city engineer. I'm here to talk about, about a cafe sidewalk agreement with the Fair Sky Properties. The request is for a a fixed cafe seating, park, it will look like, if we're by council, it includes basically bar-type seating, both park and.
David, you're breaking up again.
Uh, and I just want, okay, one moment. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Better.
All right, thank you. So this type of an agreement is similar to other permanent cafe.
You're breaking up again.
Okay, thank you. One.
David, we lost you.
Okay, my, my back. And can you hear me?
I can hear you, but now, okay, now we can see you too.
Awesome. Sorry about that, a little kind of difficulty there. Uh, so this sidewalk cafe agreement is similar to other permanent fix type of agreements that have been approved by city. Right here, this, the red building is kitty corner to fourteen oh one park, the item that's before your night. And this one right here is for a wine tasting business that is on Park Street, just down the street. It's a two-step process. First, we have agreement, and then if the agreement is adopted by council or approved by council, then we head to an encroachment permit and construction. So in this, this case, it's permanently attached seating, which means it's actually bolted down or sleeved into the this, the picture here shown is kind of a rendition of what will the proposal looks like. As you can see down in the bottom left corner, this is the type seating, a fish, a bottle type, but this is a top view of the proposal. It includes five different eating areas on both. Uh, it is, they're gonna have a section that is ADA compliant that complies with all rules for, so everybody has access to this. Uh, the side on Fourteenth Street is about sixty feet long, and the portion on Park Street is about fifty feet long. So when we get these type of requests from different either business owners or landowners downtown, we, we go out there and look and see what the existing could. Uh, and this law shows the the building and the two areas here near this and on the Fourteenth Street side. In our evaluation indicates most of this site is not currently needed.
You're breaking up again.
Standard set.
David, would it help to have Warren do the slides and you just do the verbal? Would that reduce the demands on your internet access and allow us to hear you better?
Sure, that would work.
May, excuse me, David, this is Dave McHugh. If you can close your art creator, that might help. It's a bandwidth hog.
Okay, let me, let me do that. I apologize, everybody. Yeah, I'm back for a second time. Everybody see the screen and hear me now?
Not really, Dave. Really can't hear you that well. Warren, do you wanna, can you give the presentation?
Okay. Uh, Warren, would you?
Yeah, let me put up the slides for you, Dave, and see if you can dictate them just without the video. Can you see this? Hang on, let me bring up the screen share. Let's reset this. Okay, Dave, can you see the screen now? Dave?
Not yet, not yet. There's just one thing, thing. Uh, there we go. All right, hope this is break three, but here we go. Uh, so it's two-step process. Next slide, please. So we look for a compliance with ADA, and basically this, this sidewalk frontage in front of this building is not compliant with ADA requirements. Um, for a sidewalk cafe agreement, the previous two items, as I showed you, they both had compliant sidewalks. So when a fixed object attached to the sidewalk and the ADA travel, that four-foot wide section that that the federal government, state government requires us to have on sidewalk for accessibility, now gets established and is basically, we we formalize that path of travel. Unfortunately, this sidewalk in front of this building is not. Another fire owner, Mr. Cliff Branch, who I think is on, and been working with him on various options. And I'll talk about those in a second for how we could make sidewalk.
Audio's still breaking pretty quickly, Dave.
Uh, the downstream volumes are low. Okay, let me see here.
David, your, your audio is just not working tonight. David, your audio is just not working tonight. So let me try to
Or alternatively, Dave, you could call in by phone. And Warren could run the slides from his workstation.
Sure, let me, let me try that.
So Dave, just call into the call screener line.
Could I answer the number, please? Oh, thank you.
Eight oh five, eight six five, seven two, seven six.
It's on the bottom of your slide there, Dave.
Hi, can
We can hear you. You're going to need to mute your teams.
Your speaker off. All right. So this is a top view layout. Can I have the next slide, please? All right. So we're at the edge of downtown. The pedestrian volumes are quite low in this area. So from that respect, this is a, an area where we would recommend to council that a sidewalk cafe would work. You know, if this was downtown, near the park, around town, we have quite a few cafes. We've gotten a lot of complaints about the width of sidewalks that are left after these go in, which has been making them more problematic. But in this case, it seems to work. Like I said, the ped volumes are low, it is right at the edge of the downtown, and you know, is a candidate, and which is why we're putting this forward to, to you tonight to consider the agreement. Now, I talked about the sidewalk is out of compliance, and in this case, it's the cross slopes of the sidewalk that are out of compliance. It turns out that the, the front entrance also of the building doesn't meet accessibility requires, requirements at this point. So we worked with the landowner, and they have decided to upgrade the sidewalks, which includes the corner ramp, the entrance to their building, and the sidewalks where the, the path of travel will be and where their eating area will be, to be in compliance with state requirements and federal requirements for accessibility. So in this case, we decided that a encroachment agreement would work. That Mr. Branch is going to be, if the city was going to do this work and fix the sidewalks and bring them up to compliance, it'd be probably around $30,000 to do that work. Of course, that city cost would be less, about 30% less possibly for the private sector to do this. But it is a substantial investment in this sidewalk, and also it, it brings the sidewalk ramp, will also bring the sidewalk ramp up into compliance. Next slide, please. So a, and we've been working hard with Mr. Branch to negotiate a sidewalk encroachment agreement. That went out today to you as an addendum. You should all have that. The agreement has the sidewalk and ramp will be reconstructed to city standards, meaning that the curb will stay in place, but the flatwork sidewalk areas will be removed and then re-poured. We've been, I've been working with the applicant's engineer and architect on that. Those plans are coming along nicely, and I think, you know, from my perspective, having worked on these projects, it, it looks, it looks like a good design and a good solution for this area. It's a 15-year term on the agreement at $1 per year. At the end of the 15-year term, the applicant can apply for, to extend it. At that point, it would be subject to any increase in cost. If there's a city fee established for use of sidewalk cafe areas, then it would be, they would be charged the prevailing rate at that time. And we negotiated this 15-year term with, with the applicant based on their sizable investments in the sidewalk that they're putting, and we thought this was a, a fair compromise. It does have, the agreement has provisions for removing the tables from the sidewalk. Let's, in the unfortunate event, maybe the, the building is in disrepair or something else happens and this is abandoned, the sidewalk is abandoned, the use of this area is abandoned, then we would have, we would have the, you know, we would have the authority to have Mr. Branch remove it. I don't anticipate it happening in this, in this, in this case. It also has provisions for sidewalk restoration if the sidewalk is damaged. So it really does protect the city and also lays out the requirements. So each, each, the permittee and the city has, both know where our responsibilities are. And it also enquires a encroachment permit, apologize for the spelling mistake there, for construction of this area. And like I had mentioned, we do have the first plans, the middle for that into the city. Next slide. With that, here's my recommendation. I'm available to answer any questions. Mr. Branch is also online if you have any questions for him, and I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that report and for working so hard to get your audio going. That was very frustrating for all of us, I'm sure. We do have Mr. Branch online. He is the applicant. Mr. Branch, would you like to make a comment before we start asking questions?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is Mr. Branch. Can you hear me?
I can. Would you like to add something to the, to the presentation?
You know, I, I wrote, I, I wrote a short letter to the city council members. I don't know if you received it or not. I assume you did.
We did.
It's pretty much, okay, so that's pretty much my, our point. We think it's a, a good situation, and also it will, you know, we've had two other storefronts essentially shut down because the, there's so little traffic with the restaurant being shut down for months here. There was so little traffic that they basically closed their doors, and so they want a restaurant to reopen so they can reopen. You know, it's going to create some new jobs and some of the things that I outlined in my letter. It was difficult to find a restaurant. We've got, we're bringing in a business from out of town, very good business that we've checked out thoroughly, and you know, we made significant concessions to bring somebody to Paso. It's not a big time to be opening restaurants, as you might imagine. But they agreed to do, you know, a good long-term contract, provided, you know, they wouldn't even consider it. None of the restaurants we talked to would consider it unless they had outdoor seating, because, you know, we don't know how long these COVID restrictions will last. And also, they all felt that even after COVID passes, people are going to want to, you know, eat outdoors just to be safer. And they just didn't, nobody felt they could do a viable, reopen a viable establishment without having some outdoor seating. We told them, you know, we try and do it, and we thought the city would be proactive, and so, and it's similar to what you see in San Luis Obispo. We've done this, we've done this type of installation at other, in other cities with our other tenants. We have about 50 different tenants, and, and we've been successful with it. We'll do a nice job. We'll do, you know, the sidewalk there is very broken up. There's trip pads, or, I mean, it hasn't been touched for decades. And so, you know, there'll be a new sidewalk on both sides of the building there, where we're doing all these improvements. And I, you know, we worked hard with David on it to make it come up to modern codes, basically. So unless you have questions, that's, that's all I have.
Well, if you could hang in there, we may have a question for you. So just
Sure, I'll stay on the line.
So let's start with council questions of staff or the applicant, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything for Cliff. I, I think it's a great opportunity for the city to both acquire new business and also improve our infrastructure with a, a willing partner, so to speak. So I don't really have anything at this point as far as questions to staff either.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Strong?
Yeah, so I guess the only thing I'm wondering about is, that's still a public sidewalk, and as far as the handicap ramp there at the corner, we've been doing those everywhere else, and now we're going to have a private sector do it, and I guess that means he can do it cheaper. But can we, is there a way we can offset some of his costs there since we paid for all the others? And he's getting this done probably cheaper than we could?
So if, if the city places money into the project, then the work would all have to be done at prevailing wage.
No, I understand that. That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying. But in the agreement we have with him, without relating it to that particular fix, can we either forgive a certain percentage of his sales taxes for a period of time, or anything like that, or fees, other fees that he might have to pay?
This is Kimberly. I think part of the offset was simply the reduced rent, which is, I mean, the, the payment of a dollar in recognition of the fact that they're putting in the substantial improvements to the sidewalk.
Okay, yes, that's the answer I'm going to get. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
I have no questions, and I just want to say I can't wait to see it. And thank you for bringing in a new business to our community. That's awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
I think it's a great improvement, and we get a, a good sidewalk out of it and a new business coming to town. I think it's a good, good way to go. Thanks.
We will open to public comment. There was no one in line for public comment. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Hammond?
I have nothing, other than just move to approve staff's recommendation.
Very good. Who was the second?
Steve Gregory.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Hammond, seconded by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion on the motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Mr. Strong.
Is that acceptable to Mr. Branch, or does he have any other requests?
Mr. Branch?
What, I, hello?
Yes, sir.
Hello? I, I didn't hear, I was put on a hold queue. I didn't hear the last couple of sentences. So could, could you repeat when you said, is it okay with Mr. Branch? I don't know what that was.
Right, the motion before the council right now is to approve staff, staff recommendation. Do you have anything?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're good with it. David's, we've both put a lot of time in this, and David's been patient. And of course, you know, we've, we've been trying to get this through so that, because we were not worried about possibly losing our tenant, because we promised him we'd pay for this and take care of it. So, and that, you know, we started on this months ago. So yeah, we're, we're thrilled, and we don't, we don't expect the city to pay for any part of it.
Good, then I'm good with it.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Item number 15.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number 15, health benefit contributions for elected officials. Mr. Cornell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm actually going to direct the presentation to Shannon Foulce, our human resources manager.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and council members. During the December 1st, 2020 council meeting, council undertook an initial consideration of a modification of health benefit contributions for elected officials. By way of background, in April 2008, the city's contribution toward elected officials' dental insurance was modified from a partial premium to the full monthly premium. On January 16th, 2018, the city's contribution toward elected officials' medical insurance was modified from a monthly defined contribution to an amount equal to the full premium for single or two-party coverage of the Purse Choice Plan. As a result, the current health and welfare benefits received by elected officials exceeds that received by the city's non-safety employees. It was recently discovered that this violates government code. The, to ensure compliance with the government code, the monthly contribution for elected officials' medical and dental insurance benefits must be reduced to match that of the SEIU or management employee groups, or the benefits received by these employee groups must be increased. Councilmembers and the mayor currently receive a stipend of $600 and $800 per month, respectively. Given the number of hours elected officials expend on behalf of the community, their current total compensation is below minimum wage, which places a financial hardship on them and discourages a significant segment of our community from running for office. On December 1st, staff was directed to analyze additional options that may be considered to help address concerns with an increased and, an increase in benefit costs for elected officials. One such option considered was an increase in council salaries. The government code provides that a city council may enact an ordinance setting the salary for each council member based on population, and that salaries may increase up to 5% for each calendar year from the last adjustment. As salaries were last set in December 2006, council may increase salaries up to an additional $420 per month. However, the attorney general also concluded that the effective date of an adjustment in salaries cannot take effect until one council member commences a new term in office, which will not occur until the next general election, November 2022. Another option analyzed was consideration of becoming a charter city. The health benefit limitation in the government code applies to both general law and charter cities. However, a charter city may provide for council compensation that exceeds the maximum amount determined by the government code, so long as such action is accordance with the terms of the charter, which may be approved, must be approved by the voters. Given the time drafting a charter and setting the election, the earliest a change in council salaries could take effect would be December of 2022. Lastly, other options considered to help address concerns with increased benefit costs was enrollment in the CalPERS retirement system and contributions to the city's ICMA 457 deferred compensation plan. However, enrolling elected officials in CalPERS is not permissible under the current retirement contract. And while 457 plan contributions would be legal, this benefit cannot be implemented until after the next general election, and neither of these changes would provide a current offset to the increased benefit costs. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Let's do council questions and try to keep it two questions. That'll be the straightest line through this discussion. We'll start off with Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, can you cite, I guess, the government code that caused us to have to roll back this difference in, in payments to the, I, I don't remember the actual consideration that was mentioned, but
The government code section you would like?
Right, Shannon. I, I don't understand what we were doing wrong, I guess, in the beginning that caused us to have to roll this back.
It's government code section 53208.5, and it was only recently realized that the way that the benefit contributions were set up were out of compliance with the government code. And essentially, we have to ensure that council health and welfare benefits is not higher than that of non-safety employees.
Okay, yeah, I see. It's just kind of backwards here a little bit, but, and then there is an opportunity for anybody elected in the future to be, we could approve a higher base for monthly stipend if we choose to do that at this time. But it would not obviously take effect until 2022.
Our city attorney would be able to speak Our city attorney would be able to speak better to that, but there would be options to either bring, um, ask the city attorney and city manager to bring forth an ordinance to increase salaries or to, uh, consider becoming a charter city to be able to modify the stipends at that point.
Right. I think we've gone over the charter discussion a little bit and we chose to stay where we were. But, um, okay, I'm, I'm okay at this point. I'll listen to other, uh, council comment.
Thank you, Councilman Strong.
Yes, and Shannon, I, I had, I made a request, I guess, that isn't included in the report, that consideration be given for, uh, uh, paying the full health and dental insurance for the management group. Uh, especially there's just a department heads possibly. Is that doable? And, uh, what would that cost be? At that point, the council could keep its current benefits, correct? Now, I see your recommendation is to the SEIU and management. Couldn't it comply to the law if it was just SIE or the management employee group?
Currently, there, there is a, an MOU in place with SEIU, which would require a meet confer to be able to make changes to that, whereas.
What about the management group, though? That's what I'm asking about.
The management group does not have that same requirement. Um, I'm pulling up the cost. And we believe that we did reference it. I believe it was approximately thirty-five thousand dollars per year.
Per year?
Correct.
Yeah, Councilmember Strong just said, I'm going to hop in there real quick. It, it is considered option five in the staff report.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia?
I have no questions, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, this is a question for our, uh, city attorney. So if we can't do this with our medical, uh, insurance and we cannot be part of the retirement of the Purse system, isn't that a little unfair?
Well, uh, unfortunately, the statutes don't always address fairness. Uh, and so the, the problem is the government code section and, you know, the legislature obviously doesn't always work on these together in the same, recognizing the impacts of all of them. So, you know, it's something that could be looked at or tried to reach out to the legislature. But the, the government code section is pretty clear, five three two zero eight point five, up to the limits of the health benefits. Um, the, the retirement is in a separate section of the law. Uh, and Shannon noted there's a chance to increase to four fifty-seven. Uh, it just would have the deferred date same as with the stipend issue. So I, I certainly understand the concern. It's just we're, we're facing the constraints of the government code section regarding the health benefits.
Okay. And then, um, whatever decision or choice we make this evening, uh, it cannot take effect until December twenty-two?
So i- if you're referring to increasing a, are you referring to increasing a stipend? A monthly stipend?
If one of the options was to consider maybe, uh, increasing the level of coverage for some of the employees to match. So it wouldn't be in favor, in our favor. If we were to make that action, would we still wait till November or December twenty-two? Or is that just going to be that?
No, that would, that, that would be a change. I mean, there would be some time involved in, in implementing those changes. Um, but that one, I, my understanding is that that is not subject to that other section that limits when compensation increases can be take effect because the health and benefits is not considered part of your compensation package, but compensation for that purpose.
Okay. That's all my, my questions right now. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very confusing.
Do we have any other questions before we go to public comment?
Hammond's good.
Okay. Hearing none, we're going to open public comment. And guess what? There's nobody waiting to make a comment. So we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. There are several options here. We've kind of been through this before. I think we've seen, we've received a little bit more information here about what we can and cannot do. Um, I just want to start off by saying I, I think it's really the tail wagging the dog that we should consider thirty-five thousand dollars in additional coverage cost for the staff. So we get health insurance. Very difficult for me to go through a J twenty exercise and have the city give us a one cent sales tax override and then come back and say, and it really makes sense. We've got to raise sewer rates and on top of that say, no, we're going to, we're going to charge you thirty-five thousand dollars more so we can have our health insurance covered. I don't think, for me, that's an option. Um, I think that the cost and time involved with going down the general, uh, the charter, uh, city route are probably prohibitive also. I think that realistically, our options are to go to a, to buy ordinance, just raise our compensation and take our lumps or put it on the ballot for the next election and let the voters decide. So that's my two bits. I wanted to get that out of the way to start with. And we'll head to the top of the list with Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, again, I, I really would say option one, in my opinion. Take no action on this at this point. It's just, uh, kind of sad that, you know, the way I guess it happened and, and what we're doing is actually going backwards with the council where, where everybody else is getting some sort of an increase. But, uh, it is what it is. So, um, that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Strong?
Well, it appears to me that take no action really isn't an option. And maybe Kimberley can correct me. Take no action would mean that we just continue to get the benefit we've currently got. And if we can't legally do that, I think thirty-five thousand dollars does not compare to ten million dollars a year that we're getting from, from, uh, the, the sales tax. Uh, ten million doesn't really equate very well with thirty-five thousand. That's, uh, and thirty-five thousand, rather than have us lose all of our compensation, basically, if you've got medical insurance or else give up your medical insurance totally, should not be an option for, for us. I don't know how we can continue to even function, uh, if we can't even stay healthy.
Certainly, it isn't fair, as was mentioned previously. Uh, Ms. Garcia?
Uh, well, sir, I'm just confused. So, um, like you said, if we take no action, um, we're just, so are we paying this out of pocket?
So, I'll, I'll, I'll let, I'll let staff answer that. But I think the misconception here is that we would take no action. I think there is action in front of us where we have to redefine, um, how that medical contribution is handled. I think we have to take some sort of action.
But Mr. Mayor, I think, I think this has already happened. I mean, we already were deducted a few months ago. Uh, this is just revisited as far as a, a item of discussion. But, uh, I believe staff will say that again, this is already done.
Yeah, so let's hear from staff on that.
As of this date, we have not made any change to the contribution. So currently, council members are still receiving the full Purse Choice premium for single and two-party coverage. So by taking no action, that would maintain what you are currently receiving. Um, otherwise, by going with option two, be changing the contributions to that of the SEIU and management group, which would result in increased costs to all elected officials.
And if we take no action, we're, we're, we're out of consistency with, uh, with the code, with state law, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Mr. Gregory?
This is Kimberley, Mayor Martin. If I could just expand on that briefly. Um, and the, the concern is that if you're out of compliance and then, you know, obviously it was inadvertent, you know, as realizing with the change in the contracts that we then had to look at what that might mean, you know, with respect to this code section. Um, but there's attorney general opinions on this code section, um, that indicate, you know, for unintentional violations, there's not a lot of penalties. But once we're aware of it, that can bring, uh, you know, significant penalties to the officials that then take the benefits. So, and, and including in extreme circumstance, criminal penalty. So, you know, I'll make sure that I, I noted that for you, that no action is a concern.
They do find themselves there in jail. Okay, Mr. Gregory?
So, uh, Kimberley, I just want to make sure there's no COVID relief on this one?
There is no COVID relief that I've seen yet. Uh, we can maybe try to plead that case through the league, but not that I've seen yet.
Okay. Well, um, if no action is not an option, it should not be on the agenda. Is that correct?
Well, it's not an option. We'd recommend it.
Yeah. Um, well, I don't, I don't know what we could do at this point.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Fred, go for it.
Okay, go for it.
I move that we approve option number five and renegotiate the benefits for the management group.
Is there a second to the motion? Going once, going twice, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternative?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Hammond would go ahead and option two. Again, that's really the only thing we can do, I think, at this point. Uh, option two. Thank you.
Second from Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Ha- Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Uh, further discussion on the motion, I just want to say that I agree with Councilman Strong and Councilman Gregory. Um, although compared with the money we usually deal with, this is a tiny amount of money. It does, it does, uh, help out with the expenses of office and for, for at least a couple of us. It's, uh, it's pretty significant. But at the same time, I, I see no alternative right now, no, no alternative to backing this, this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, as a, as an additional thing, maybe staff could, uh, and I've never done this, is review, uh, other councils, um, and how they're compensated and what, in other words, are we in, in sync with everyone else at this point? I have no clue.
No, that's a good idea and I think we should keep working on, uh, alternatives to sort of make us whole. Again, it's a, it's a, compared with the, the rest of the budget, it's a tiny amount of money, but it can be significant on a personal level. If there's no further discussion on the motion?
I do have a.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm going to have to vote against it because, uh, this will be devastating for my wife and it could kill her. I can't vote for it.
I understand. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, so, um, so we can still come back and talk about changing the, uh, the stipend or the, the payment or the, whatever we want to call it, salary, if you want to call it that. For a future date, we can still talk about that, right?
We can always talk about it again. I think the, the, the killer deadline, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that regardless of what we do, aside from modifying, uh, the management group's benefits so that we benefit, is, nothing else is going to go into effect until two thousand twenty-two. And that's assuming that we're all still in office then.
Right. Yeah, my, well, my question is, I'm okay with option two. I just want to know if there's a way to talk about the change in, uh, November of twenty-two.
Yeah, I think we, obviously, we still have that option. And, uh, I'm perfectly willing to talk about it tonight if you want to.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Yes.
So option two just says reduce council members' health benefits. So just re, it doesn't mean we're not getting any health benefits, correct?
No, it means that we're going to be making the same contribution towards our health benefits that, um, SEIU and management group does. So it's going to be deducted, it's going to be deducted from our stipend, our share.
But out of a much lower salary, so that it's a huge percentage of our salary.
It's, it's, it's hugely inequitable. There's no doubt about that. But the law kind of have, has us under its thumb, so. Um, does the maker of the motion wish to schedule future conversation about, uh, um, ordinances?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. I mean, uh, that would be part of the motion then is direct staff to maybe, uh, research, uh, how other councils, other cities, other agencies are handling this kind of a situation with the growing increases in costs of, of actually doing business here. So, uh, that would be my recommendation as well.
Okay, will the second go along with that?
I, yeah, I agree with that. Thank you.
Very good. If there is no further discussion on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Presidently, aye. Motion passes four to one. Okay, we move on now to council business and committee reports. Councilman Hammond?
Uh, I think the, the main thing was, uh, attended the airport commission. Um, nothing really major to report. They are still considering leases. They brought that back for further discussion within their commission, um, and report out later on. Um, other than that, uh, nothing further. I had a couple of things that I really wasn't preparing because I was going to be doing this at home from my office there, but I'm out the office, out the airport right now. So there was something that, uh, there was a resolution, I think we all saw with regard to joining other cities where, uh, it's, uh, basically saying, uh, to Sacramento, stop taking away our rights to land use. And, uh, that is something I think is rather important. Maybe we want to bring this back on a future, uh, meeting. But you can see how we're getting, uh, like on Motel Six for one. But there's other ways, I, I think Warren might be able to elaborate. If we bring up a item of discussion at later meetings, uh, about how the state is essentially chipping away at our rights as a council to figure how we want to run our city. So I think it's important that we discuss that and make a, a council decision on, uh, our position on that. So.
So perhaps we can have an agenda item where Warren or someone else on staff could report, uh, on the trends uh, of state activities and how it encroaches upon local authority. We can move from there.
Exactly. Yeah, that would be, uh, there's a resolution that's out and, um, I think we all saw it in our emails, but, uh, it might be something I might want to just like kick around and see what, uh, we all feel about as a council.
Anyone object to that? Sounds good. Okay. Go ahead, John.
All right. Um, there was another thing. Shoot, I just forgot it again. Um, maybe, uh, that may be at the end of this, uh, Steve, uh, maybe I'll get back to it.
No problem. Mr. Strong? Fred, you're muted.
Yes, now here I am. Uh, well, we've had a couple of very big disasters, as you know, that I was made aware of through my, uh, different agencies. The first one, of course, was that the Pacific Surf liner track, uh, failed because of a landslide down by Vandenberg Airport, uh, Air Force Base. As a result, we have no train service at all right now going south. And we will not until somehow they can replace that hill or that track or build a bridge or whatever they do. And so I'm working to try to get that corrected. Also, we all know about the washout on Highway one. And I'm, uh, going to be having a, a, uh, SLOCOG meeting tomorrow. And one of the things I will be bringing up there is, uh, as we start to look at how we're going to pay for that, possibly we ought to look at rerouting Highway one at that point because it seems every two years, we wind up spending one to two billion dollars replacing that section of road or a section of road like that somewhere up there. And perhaps it's time to take, take, uh, the whole road farther up the hill somehow and, uh, avoid that recurring cost all the time. I also, uh, was had two, uh, League of Cities meetings. They were policy committee meetings. And, uh, that relates to what John was saying too. We were looking at legislation in the housing area, uh, as well as in revenue and taxation. And the state has so many bills proposed right now to take over a lot of our planning functions that would just let developers develop as they wi- wish in some areas. Uh, it would allow anyone, uh, to take a single-family lot and split it and put another house on it, all the way down to a three thousand square foot lot. And, uh, I think that, that would increase our densities here and pass hurdles uh, way more than, than we have the, uh, infrastructure to handle. So, uh, we are opposing that. Uh, and then, uh, we also have at the meeting tomorrow at, at Losan, the thing that I brought up with Gus Curie earlier, and that is a notice that the Office of Management and Budget at the federal level is seeking to change the population basis for being a metropolitan statistical area, which, uh, would move it from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, which would mean we would no longer qualify possibly because we're lumped with the Tascadero and that's not up to a hundred thousand people. Um, that will reduce the money that SLOCO gets in order to give us our funds for our road projects by between fifteen and twenty-five million dollars a year. And, uh, I'm trying to work with. And I'm trying to work with Congressman Carver Hall and our National League of Cities and the National Association of Regional Councils to get that opposed in Congress and so that it doesn't go into effect. And that's pretty much my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I attended the CAPSLO meeting and got to hear their updates everywhere from Prado's, the Prado Project, to Head Start, how they're doing with the childcare program as well. I also attended the 3CE Lunch Zoom meeting. Very informative. I hope a lot of people are getting all their information. Mr. Oswaldo Martinez is doing, I think he's becoming a professional at it because I've heard it four times already, and he's getting better and better at it. I also attended the Slow County Oversight Meeting. I think that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Let's see. I was, I guess, nominated to be a permanent commissioner on LAFCO. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your support. So we now have official representation from the city of Paso Robles as a full-time commissioner there. And then the other item I wanted to bring up, I wanted to, maybe we can, in honor of Mr. Jim Haggerty, who recently passed away, maybe return our meeting in his honor. He's a great Paso Roblin. He's coming home tomorrow night, I think, or the next night, and he's just a great man and a great sense of humor. And I just like, I'd like to pay tribute to him tonight. That's it for me.
Very good. Thank you, sir. For myself, I attended the Homeless Services Oversight Committee, Channel County's Board of Directors, the 3CE Lunch and Learn, where the Monterey Power Company was explaining what's to come in that system to our local residents. I think it was pretty well attended. Attended the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, participated in the elected officials' phone calls, which happen every week to give us COVID-19 updates from the Public Health Office, and met with my Paso Robles Diversity Panel. Also, I met with the City Selection Committee. That's where we got our new LAFCO representative. So glad Steve stepped up for that. Mr. Gregory and I have been working as a subcommittee with our partner organizations as we inch toward renewal of contracts with the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street and the Wine Country Alliance, et cetera. Each of them had done significant work in responding to our suggestions. Each would like to make a presentation to the council. I was wondering if the council would be interested in doing a half-day workshop, so we could do it, obviously do it online, but would give them the opportunity to lay out their, their reports and their, and their plans without waiting till this time of night when everyone's tired and everything sort of gets rushed. And if that's something that would be acceptable to the council, I think we should do that. Anybody have any objections to that?
Hammond, no.
So Steve, I don't know. I guess a timing thing would be most important for them to make the presentation to us. So do we make another, like, a special meeting at five, five to seven o'clock or something during the week?
Either that or a half-day on Saturday, whatever's convenient for the council. I just think it would be good for them to have the opportunity to sort of spread out and do a real job with us.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we'll look at the calendar and come back to you with some options.
Very good. Thank you. I have nothing else. Mr. Frucci, I see your man's...
I'm sorry. I forgot one thing that's important.
Go ahead.
And that is, I was asked to participate in the rent and mortgage Slow County Coalition meeting, which I did and made a presentation on state and federal legislation affecting that, and then appeared on two talk shows talking about getting rent relief for not only the renters but also our landlords who are impacted by those renters who can't pay the rent. And we are working that on a countywide basis now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had that thought back on, I was trying to reach earlier. Real quick, as a side note, too, along with Maria, I did have J.R. Kellergrou from 3CE speak to Rotary of about 40 Rotarians there the other day. Very informative, and I think he's getting the word out on the transition that's coming up. So also, what I was trying to remember was this. I've asked staff, Warren in particular, to get me an update on the request from the Pioneer Museum. They asked to have a lighted sign similar to the fairgrounds at their corner of Gregory and Riverside. I'm not sure exactly where that landed. I believe it was denied, and that would have to come up to council for review. If that's what it needs to take, again, Warren, I think we should do that, make an agenda item, whatever. Do they have to make the request themselves, or can we do it ourselves, or how would that work?
So we're right now in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Pioneer Museum folks that are working on the sign. And then based on the outcome of that meeting, we can advise you of kind of what the next steps and options are for them.
Okay. All right. So you are working on it. I thought it was more of a stalemate, but just long as something's moving, that's what I was looking for. So appreciate the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have second thoughts? Mr. Frucci, your hand is up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to remind everybody on this Groundhog Day that we do have the community survey that's out. It's designed to give the council input for your all, your all-day session on Saturday, February 10. So the survey, we're asking any community resident or businessperson who wishes to take it to please do so. They can access it on prcity.com, and the survey's open until February 10. And then we would also like their participation at your visioning session on February 20 at 9:00 a.m. That'll be virtual, and the agenda will be posted in all the normal places.
Very good. Any other business to come before the council time?
No, sir.
Upcoming events, Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting Monday, February the 8, 1:30 p.m. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, February 9, 6:30 p.m. Library Board meeting Thursday, February 11, 10 a.m. City Council regular meeting Tuesday, February 16, 6:30 p.m. The deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on Tuesday, February 16, is Wednesday, February the 3. And if there is no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight in honor and memory of our good friend and colleague, Mr. Jim Haggerty, who was an endless source of service to his country and to his community, not to mention good humor.
So I'll vote for Hammond.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Strong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Your Honor.